Excellent. Welcome to the fourth hearing of the Public Accountability and Work Committee's inquiry into the New South Wales Government's use and management of consulting services. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today, and I pay my respects to elders past and present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. And I also acknowledge any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples who are joining us today or watching on the live stream. So far in this inquiry, the committee has focused on evidence from New South Wales government agencies, particularly in the health sector. At today's hearing, we will be hearing the perspectives of academics and researchers with expertise researching the public sector. We will also hear from chartered accountants A and Z. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, the House has authorised the filming, broadcasting and photography of committee proceedings by representatives of media organisations from any position in the room and by any member of the public from any position in the audience. Any person filming or photographing proceedings must take responsibility for the proper use of that material. This is detailed in the broadcasting resolution, a copy of which is available from the secretariat. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside their evidence at this hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments that you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections from others, sorry, about others, under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness, according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee's secretariat. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to please speak into the microphone. And finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? So I now welcome our first witnesses, Emeritus Professor James Guthrie, Professor John Dumay and Dr Erin Twyford. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation? I'll start. Whoever wants to go first.
Yeah, I'll start.
Thank you.
Professor James Guthrie, from Macquarie Business School. I appear in a private matter, sorry, private case. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be true, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much.
I'm Professor, is it work?
Yeah.
Professor John Dumay from Macquarie Business School. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
I am Dr Erin Twyford and I'm from the University of Wollongong, the Faculty of Business and Law, and I appear in a private capacity. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Could I ask if you've got one, if you'd like to make a short opening statement?
Okay. Yes, we'd like to, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to make a submission to the inquiry. Our submissions inform by research we have undertaken into the consulting industry into Australia, especially the big four accounting firms. The state audit general has identified $1 billion of consulting services in New South Wales Government between 2017 and 2022. The significance of the consulting industry in shaping what we call new public sector management is really important and should be acknowledged. The consulting industry are enablers of making change in the public service and the public sector. And we've given evidence to the Commonwealth Inquiry into consulting services and we made the case that we think it's an issue of culture and there's a big issue associated with lack of transparency and lack of accountability in these partnerships. And it's not just consulting, it's also auditing. So they've got the different arms and there's a real issue there. Myself and Alan Fowles, we've written a couple of opinion pieces and pieces and made a submission to the Commonwealth and we argue for the breaking up of the auditing from consulting, a proper separation, because that would be the only way we can get around the conflicts of interest. And finally, from my perspective, we're arguing that all contractors to the government, New South Wales Government, should declare any conflicts of interest. In the paper over the last couple of weeks, we've had plenty of conflicts of interest, where one firm is providing policy advice, then that same firm is doing the economic modelling, that same firm is there undertaking financial planning for the, I won't name it, but it was just like they had finger in every pie and that's just become obvious. And we're only in this position now because of investigative journalism and because of parliamentary inquiries, that this material has started to come out of the ether. And it was only in 18th of January, I think it was, where they, the PWC and the tax scandal. And even then, it wasn't really till May that we started to get some real details about a lot of these issues going on. And the Commonwealth Inquiry is unearthing new material every day. Okay, thank you.
So just to continue, big consultancies often work both sides of the street. So they will advise, for example, leading fossil fuel polluters and also government mandates to reduce national emissions, or auditing to a large prime contractor while at the same time bidding for similar contracts, or writing federal tax legislation while advising clients on how to sidestep it. Our submission outlined recent cases of conflicts of interest exposed by investigative journalists. This included PWC and its failure to disclose its interest in a private education provider while conducting a confidential review into the Commonwealth regulator of private colleges, and that was with Texas. As a further example, KPMG was paid by the aged care, safety and quality commission to undertake audits of residential aged care facilities while charging providers for advice on audits and accreditation. As a final example, as James mentioned, the PWC tax scandal that's unfolded over the last couple of months has seen them walking both sides of the street in advising the government on its new anti-tax avoidance legislation while simultaneously devising tax schemes designed to circumvent the new legislation as soon as it was enacted for its most prominent clients worldwide. Therefore, we recommend that consulting firms that want to work for government should be made to disclose things such as any clients they advise that could potentially conflict with the public sector work and the advice provided. And further, this disclosure should be made available on a publicly accessible register.
Our submission focuses on the overuse of consultants by the New South Wales Government and its impact on the New South Wales public sector and public services. Our central proposition is simple: consulting partnerships and firms are not publicly regulated. However, self-regulation lies with the individual members of a professional accounting body or registered auditor or tax agent. The self-regulation is embedded in professional bodies' codes of ethics and practices. It is not applied to firms, partnerships, but to individuals. Currently, there are few enforcement measures for integrity breaches and unethical behaviour by consultants and firms. Professional bodies such as the Accounting and Legal Professional Associations take limited action against members who are partners in the big four consulting firms. Revelations about conflicts of interest and unethical behaviour are primarily due to whistleblowers and investigative journalists rather than as a result of self-regulation or self-reporting. Even if there is some self-regulation and self-reporting, it is conducted behind closed doors with limited or no public transparency. We recommend that the government help educate and empower the public service, invest in capacity building and creation, and we further recommend that the government embed learning as an endpoint into all contract evaluations. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your detailed submission and for your attendance today. I'm particularly interested in talking about the conflict of interest issues, but just before we do that, I think it might be useful for the committee if we could get a bit of an understanding of what the regulation is for consultants in New South Wales. And I appreciate that may be different depending on whether they are also registered as accountants or lawyers or whatever, or if they are management consultants of a different type. But I'm very interested in understanding if there is wrongdoing in the course of, you know, I guess anything that a consultant is doing in relation to government work or a government agency, what are the consequences of wrongdoing?
Very little. It depends on your contract you got with them. So if we talk about the big four accounting firms, their partnerships, nearly all their partners would be member of Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand, and they have a self-reporting mechanism, but none of that was done at PWC. The PWC case now has been referred to the American, I've got to get names right, PCAOB, and that has power in Australia, and that's about the only form of regulation we can find on the big four. And that was set up after the Anderson Enron disaster, which cost somewhere between 63 billion and maybe 100 billion. That was set up to oversight the auditing industry and they reach into Australia because they were the ones that exposed KPMG cheating and fined them. So what happened is quite a number of these big firms, staff have been cheating on their exams and especially on their ethics exam, which is quite interesting now all this stuff's come out, and they were fined a lot of money. So then if we peel it back, it gets back to the professional associations, so Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand, CPA, IPA and the Tax Association, I think they're called. They all have ethical rules and codes of conduct, but guess what? They've done nothing.
So they have rules?
They have rules.
And we've heard this a lot in this.
And ethical, ethical codes of practice.
Yeah.
And as far as we can see, there's been no disciplinary action taken against KPMG or PWC over these matters. They, well, I worked for them for 10 years as academic advisor and they just seem to go after little fish. And it's a bit like the tax board on the PWC case, what did they do at the tax board?
So.
They just banned the partner from PWC for two years from being a tax agent.
Have you formed a view about what appropriate penalties might be for various breaches in that?
Well, I suppose this is the discussion they're having at the Commonwealth level. So Senator Deborah O'Neill has announced a new inquiry, which will be the fourth one, one here and three up there, and hers focuses very much on regulation and transparency and the partnership model, and that's what she's trying to get her handle on. Her second inquiry is on the effectiveness of ASIC. ASIC has walked away from auditors, oh, sorry, the only power ASIC has is for the consultants that are listed as companies, so under the Corporations Act. But the partnerships are just, no one oversees them.
I think, if I can add to that, when we're looking at consultants doing work for government, they're effectively working as public servants, right? They're doing the work of the public service. So if we're talking about what sort of disciplinary measures we would like to see, it would be the same as those imposed on public servants. You shouldn't be able to hide behind a corporate veil if you are essentially doing the work that a public servant would do in the public sector. So I think there's already inbuilt disciplinary measures, it's just the idea of removing that corporate veil and saying, look, if the taxpayer is paying for you to come and do the work and it's supposed to be in the public interest, then any deviations of behaviour should be dealt with as if you were a public servant. We've seen huge discrepancies, as James mentioned, between what happened to Peter John Collins and what's happened to people who work for the public service in the case of insider trading or even whistleblowing. So that would be my recommendation.
So one of the issues that we've been looking at in the context of New South Wales, health in particular, is not just the conflicts of interest that a firm might have in acting for the government plus acting for, you know, some other entity or corporation, but also this phenomena we have where these consultants are sitting on government agency boards. Now, my understanding, and I'd love you to confirm or deny this, is that unlike a private company where we have directors' duties applying under the Corpse Act, for a government sector agency, like a local health district board, a director sitting on one of those boards isn't subject to those same duties and consequences. So if a consultant is sitting on one of those boards and there's something wrong, what consequence is there for that person?
I couldn't form a judgement on that, that's outside my expertise. But on the train coming up this morning, we were talking about this in that what we're finding in the corporate sector, the big four actually partners or ex-partners are on boards and on audit committees. And they don't see any conflict of interest there when the auditor comes along or they do consulting work. And we're talking about, I think, 3 billion, 4 billion, anyway, it's a huge amount of money they get from the corporate sector, only from listed companies we can see. But they have infiltrated onto the corporate boards and audit committees.
So can I, sorry, could I put this to you? From PWC data that they provided to this committee on notice, there are at least 25 New South Wales public sector boards with a current PWC partner or employee sitting on them. And that's just PWC on 25 of our boards. And I know from my own research that there are a lot of current consultants from the other big four also sitting across a huge number of government boards. Does that sound like a problem to you? And should we be getting better regulation to cover those kind of situations?
Well, it becomes a catch-22, doesn't it? It depends how much work you give the big four to do public servants and public services. Now, I just read on the train this morning, there was your Treasury were getting one of the firms to write the minutes, to hold the meetings, set the agenda for Treasury, New South Wales Treasury. And the guy in New South Wales Treasury, it was exposed, oh, at the beginning of the year, over the KPMG thing, the guy was putting in confidence, cabinet in confidence on his documents, on his letterhead, on his emails. And this is, this is a partner and a big four embedded in Treasury and they called him, oh, a rainmaker, that's what he is. He was a rainmaker. He was only there to get extra work. Just terrible behaviour.
Do you think it would make a difference if there was some sort of a professional body for consultants? So you know, we've talked about professional associations, but if there was some sort of register or certification or something like that?
So this was brought up at the Monday last week, or whatever it was, in the Senate Committee, and it was pointed out that there's no professional body for consultant.
Yes.
Anyone can call themselves a consultant. I'm a consultant. And there's no anything around it. So it gets back to, not the individual, I think, it gets back to the firm structures and their lack of transparency.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's really the point. If you set up an oversight body or another professional association, if they operate by the same rules and oversight mechanisms that we have now in self-regulation, that's not really going to solve anything. You know, we just recently had the Chartered Accountants reviewed all their procedures and they really confirmed that really unless an outside body, like if somebody is convicted by a court, for example, we'll name that person because that person's already out in, been named by the court. But if there's disciplinary action against members, it's all done behind closed doors. So when you had the KPMG exams cheating scandal, you know, we don't know who the people are that were sanctioned. Nobody knows who they are.
KPMG said two partners left the firm. And there was 1,500 people involved in that cheating scandal. And that's not the only one. It's happened in EY, it's happened in America, which gets to the culture of the organisation. EY are trainee auditors cheating on their ethics exam. It's like, oh, that sends a good message.
And when something happens, we just, everything behind closed doors, we close the doors, we deal with it internally, we then say, we wiped our hands of it, we've done our job, we've complied with the ethical standards. But at the end of the day, when you sit out on our side of the street and you go, well, does it pass the pub test? And it doesn't. Quite simple.
Through your chair, just following up from my colleague's question, and thank you for your submission, can I say, it's relatively short, but I tell you what, it's got a lot of punch to it, under each of the four headings you outline at the start on page number one. But I wanted to put this to you, that looking back in years to come, if we had a crystal ball, let's say take 10 years, we'll probably see this all evolve, picking up presumably, I would have thought, some, if not all, of what you're proposing and perhaps some others as well. So we'll be able to look back and see, this is how this matter's been addressed by Australia. And then it'll be sort of clear to us that this is how it's developed. But my question is that as part of this, we essentially actually have an oligopoly operating amongst the four big players. So in a sense, there is this almost threshold question that as an economy, and as part of the economy in this very specialised area, we actually have a fundamental problem with oligopoly, an oligopoly practice amongst the four. And that lends itself to thinking about, well, does in fact that need to be looked at as well as part of the overall consideration? Because oligopolies do what oligopolies do. That's no excuse, I'm just simply saying from an economic point of view. And sort of history tends to show, not always, but you've got to break down that oligopoly. And I mean, in some sense, and I've sort of noted here the points you made about the way in which there needs to be, if we're sort of going to tackle this, the need to, and I think just focus on this, the demarcation between auditing and consulting. I'm just thinking about in my mind, if you take auditing, and I'm not an auditor, welcome your thoughts on this, that some of the auditing work done, in fact, a lot of this auditing work is done by these organisations, is very large jobs. Outside those large companies, who in fact has the capacity to do some of these massive audit jobs? And of course, that comes back to this feedback to the oligopoly, they've got the jobs, they're not going to let them go. And therefore, you've got to essentially try and tackle this on many fronts at once. So I just welcome your thoughts about that.
Okay. I was writing about that last week, the fourth inquiry, and my line of argument was, we've got a real problem because we've got a big four, we may have a big three soon. If PWC explodes, we may have that Arthur Andersen. So then we're getting less and less. So the oligopoly nearly becomes a monopoly. I'm not quite sure what the solution to it is, and this is not a New South Wales problem, it's not an Australian problem, it's a global problem. And what was interesting last week when I was writing about this, I was doing some searches to work out how much they offshore. So your big four now offshore to India, and it could be up to 20% of their workforce is in India now. And they've got whole suburbs full of Indian kids, I assume, doing audit work, no quality control, we're not quite sure what the quality control would be. The partners themselves hardly working on an audit. So we've got the case of Clarendon in the UK, the building company that collapsed. I think that was $100 billion that collapsed. KPMG was sued £1.4 billion and had to pay up. And they found in the parliamentary inquiry that the partner had spent two hours on the job, and that was him reading the report and signing it. He did no other work on that job at all. So we've got this sort of lowballing in auditing, where they lowball, they put cheap kids on the job. They, why do they lowball? They're after the consulting work. That's the big, that's where you can charge the partner out at $5,000 or $10,000 a day. So that's what they're after.
Can I just ask you on that, just, I guess, going the other way as well? So we've heard a lot about the idea of, you know, auditing being the loss leader and going in and doing the lowball work in order for the consultants to come in. Is there also a situation, or have you seen situations, where you get, you know, a large company being audited consistently by one particular firm, then doing sort of cheap consulting work? And I guess one example that I got my hands on was in relation to EY and Santos. So EY is the auditor for Santos, and EY happened to also do a very cheap piece of work for the New South Wales Government, producing the future of gas statement, which happened to only allow Santos to do any new gas projects. So, you know, that sort of, can you explain to us, I guess, if EY was here or if any other consultant firm was here, they'd probably say, yes, but we've got these integrity walls set up, we don't share that information. What in practice stops them from really preferencing the interests of a big major client like that?
Well, they have what they call Chinese walls. And the evidence given in the inquiry in Canberra was someone had access to confidential information and they put a note on their door saying, please don't talk to me because I've got this. And then that person actually distributed by email to the other side. And that, he was disciplined, that was one of the only discipline that the big four did, that was the disclosure of information.
So that's one we've caught, that's one we know about?
That's exactly. They just got caught. And once they got caught, they, well, in the PWC case and the tax scandal, they said it was one bad apple. Where I've looked at the emails and they've gone around the world, partnerships, PWC partnerships around the world. And of course, they've caught four big tech companies, American tech companies that changed their tax plans because of the information, and they actually had to reverse their structures. I don't know if they end up paying any tax, but they usually don't. But they got caught. So that's gone global now because that's been reported to the Public Bodies Review in Oversight Committee in the US. So that was only done, it was done the other day, 7th of July, where it should have been done in 2014, when the case happened, when it started. But they self-reported to the Public Bodies' overview, which, as I said before, I think that's the only regulating framework that we've got in terms of oversight of the big four.
If I can just add, sorry, and this sort of hugs back to Senator Donnelly's question too, in dealing with the oligopolies, at the moment, what we see are pretty blatant conflicts of interest, and we're relying on the self-reporting of these firms. And that is just so inadequate. And most of the time, they'll come out later and say, oh, you know, we weren't aware of a conflict of interest. And I'm looking at the example that we gave about Texas where, you know, they And I'm looking at the example that we gave about Texas, where, you know, they had an almost eight million dollar interest in one of the colleges that Texas was going to advise. And also who was sitting on the board of the top education group, the former PWC chief executive, Tom Seymour, who's now been outed. So we can't rely on them to self-report anymore. And that goes back to wanting that, that public register. And there has to be checks with that as well. We can't just take their word for it. And in looking at, well, how do we then differentiate between audit functions and consultancy arms of firms? What we're, we've sort of recommended as well is instead of having these operational splits, where they put the note on the door or they, they say, you know, don't worry, we're, we're not talking to each other. There has to actually be a structural split where they are different entities. And they're, they're not known to each other and they're not going to almost cross-contaminate one another. And in talking about, you know, what sort of incentive is there for them to do the right thing? There is none because they are looking to grow profits. Because without profit or without money, they can't continue to grow their business. That's the only way they make business is through taking on these contracts. They don't own assets. They might have investments, but again, they can only grow by taking on more work. And the only way they can take on more work is by saying yes to everybody. So there is no incentive to sit back and say, well, actually, that could be a conflict. We'll let it go to our, our leading competitor. So I'm not sure how you fix that, but just in terms of what stops them? Nothing unless they fear the wrath of a disciplinary body who doesn't call them out on it.
What would be your recommendation, like say, your top three recommendations for alternatives to the reliance on consultants?
Well, I think we spoke in the submission that we need to rebuild capacity in the public sector. I mean, we've also noted that while there's been an increased reliance on consultancies within the New South Wales Government, there has been increased numbers of public servants. So that just doesn't make any sense. It's almost like contracting out work that's supposed to be performed by people in-house. So that needs to be looked at and perhaps more investment in those people. So I know the federal government wants to put together an in-house consultancy group, and that's been criticised because they can never match the, the salaries of what consultants would get. But if you get really good people in, you will still save money because you're not paying all this money for that shadow public service. So I think that's number one. We need the public register of conflicts of interest, and that has to be made really transparent and accessible by every person. It shouldn't just take an academic or, or a senator to be able to understand that information. The current tendering processes are so opaque, it's really difficult to extract any information from it. And in terms of the third, the top three, I would probably say that, that structural split. And, and looking at the, the structure of the big four, they, they are ostensibly partnerships. But I don't believe that they act like partnerships. I don't think there's equal decision-making ability across partners. And I mean, we have heard evidence in the other inquiry that realistically, that is not how they operate. And I would also look at the, the Corporations Act, which currently allows a thousand partners for accounting, but only, I think it was two hundred for lawyers. And it just made me query, what's so special about accountants that they get, you know, five times as many partners? And I don't think there is anything special. And I was, I tried to find the Hansart on that to understand why that change was made. So I think we definitely need to address how many partners perhaps we have in a big four.
And on transparency, they're required to produce a transparency report. And I've, I've done a study where I've looked at fifteen years of them. These are really good marketing documents. But they have little information in them, little information content that really matters. You know, it says, what's your partner's salary? So what they do is say, oh, we report one for everyone. What's your remuneration on retirement? We remunerate our partners on retirement. Nothing, no numbers, nothing. And when you read the document, it's really selling more of the same. It's not a transparency report. Even to find the revenues, you can find the revenues in that there's some external bodies collect revenues. So you can find, it's gross. But it's very hard to find what revenues come from auditing, what come from consulting, what comes from tax advice. There's no breaking down of those sort of figures. It's just a consolidated view. Which is against Corporations Act and all that sort of stuff. But they don't have to sit under the Corporations Act.
Mr. Farlow.
Thank you. I just wanted to turn to some of the things in New South Wales. So I have a broad conversation when it comes to consultants, but in the New South Wales Government perspective, like what can be done in New South Wales. One of your recommendations is a much more significant role for the New South Wales Audit Office and the New South Wales Audit General to provide oversight. How would you see this operating and what do you see as the limits on the Audit General at present?
Okay, now I can answer that one. So I did some research with Des Pearce, and he was the Victorian Audit General on PPPs, Public Partnerships. And we did a fair bit of work about how can we bolster the Audit General's office? So there's something very simple. It's called follow the money. And that just means the Audit General has power to go and look at the quality of work of a consulting contract and the quality of advice. At the moment, the Audit General cannot step outside the public service. The Audit General in your transport case, I heard a little rumour about your transport case. There was two documents produced by KPMG. One valued the holding at forty billion, the other one at twenty billion. The reason they had to get it to twenty billion was to get the rate of return. And if you get a rate of return, then it was called a commercial organisation, not a public organisation, which is, you know, in accounting talk. I heard the Audit General was not able to access those documents of KPMG. So if you read the fine print, they say, this is the stuff we looked at. And there's little footnotes saying, well, we weren't able to actually see how they arrived at those numbers. Now that to me, that's stupid. You know, the Audit General should be able to look at something like that, which is consulting advice, twenty billion dollar difference in valuation, and work out what's going on. And I don't, you, you might hear from an ex-KPMG partner. I'm not quite sure. I don't know if he's put a submission in.
You might have walked in the room.
Oh, it's behind us, is it?
It is behind us. It's like a pantomime now. He's behind you.
His, to the inquiry in Canberra was very good on this matter.
And just on that point in terms of, you know, some of the assertions. So, and look, with full disclosure, I was on that inquiry before in Tahiti. And that's, so I've, I've, I've lived a bit of it. But I noted in your, and, and I've got to say, the figure sort of twigged me. But I noticed in your submission, the statement that there was thirty million dollars that KPMG received for establishing Tahiti. And that sort of twigged as, you know, not being, not according my, with my memory. Just wanted to see where that figure comes from and if there's anything further, because it doesn't seem to accord with.
That came from an Audit General's report.
Whereabouts? Because the Audit General's report, from having a look, said that there was a total final cost of twenty-two point five six million for the consultants. Of which, I think they outlined that it was two point five for, from Treasury and nine hundred from transport for.
Yeah, on page three. That's where I've sort of calculated it.
Where's that from? In, in the Tahiti one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I can, I can take a question on notice.
Take the question on notice if you can.
Check my calculations.
It doesn't accord with sort of, you know, my memory, which sort of twigged it. But also in further reading of the report as to sort of.
I might have to get an audit to come and check my.
Could you, could you tell us who your auditor is? Because we might have some business.
And, and if I could go back to the questions in terms of the statement made in terms of how consulting firms address their conflicts of interest. I guess in the past, there has been some precedent when it comes to tax advice and audit advice, that consulting firms don't do both for certain companies. Do you see any models from what was implemented there that could be used potentially as a way into the future that we could treat, you know, where conflicts may arise?
Okay, so, so that's an organisational thing. You're talking about trying to set up some structures and some rules around what services they can provide. So I was really surprised how many different types of services they provide to the New South Wales public sector. So they just don't provide tax advice, accounting advice, auditing advice. But they provide, well, you found out in your health boards. All the work they did on the health boards, the tendering, the setting up of tendering, so all the economic analysis. So I'm not quite sure how you get around this because they got so big and they offer so many different services. I'm not quite sure how you get around it other than a conflict of interest. If you buy, if you provide a service to transport, you should not provide another service to transport in the sense of, if they provide accounting advice or structural legal advice, because they provide legal advice too. So I, I think that's just got to be somehow in the tender process, it's got to be tied down that, you know. The other thing we noticed in Canberra, the tender process, they come in, they lowball, and then they get extension after extension and extension after extension. In the tax, in the tax, it was half, half a billion dollars worth of ATO, half a billion dollars of extensions on one project. So, you know.
Sorry, what do you mean by half a billion dollars extensions?
Okay, so you, you, you come in and they said the project's a hundred million in the ATO.
Yeah, it's just added on. Okay.
They just keep adding on because they haven't completed the work.
And you made the point as well in terms of the increasing size of the public sector in New South Wales as well. So when it comes to capacity in a sense, that it doesn't necessarily line up with the argument that effectively the public sector's been starved, so that's why consultants are required. But I guess there has been in recent times more of the dependence on, we have the KPMG report or we've got the PWC report. Or there, there is sort of a, a certain amount of legitimacy which is given to a government action if it has a consultant's report behind it. Is that one of the things that you think is perhaps a, a challenge now for public servants in being able to prosecute a case if they don't have that sort of external advisory to support their argument, so to speak?
Yeah, so I, I think they do use it as a, a form of legitimacy and also as almost a, a protection. Because if they're putting that advice forward, well, it's not really my advice, it's their advice, so we rely on that. So if anything goes wrong, you know, we can go back and, and sort of blame them instead of me, the individual, probably because of the, the type of punishment that they might face versus, you know, if a big four makes the wrong choice, we've seen. You know, I mean, PWC is getting raked over the coals, but really, not a lot happens to the people within those firms. And the firms continue on and they still get government work. So I would say that it is part of a protective measure so that it doesn't fall back on the individual in the public service.
Could I ask Professor Dumney if you've got any particular observations about some of what we've been covering this morning or some additional points to elucidate?
Well, you know, my, my area really is in this kind of capacity building. So my area of expertise is knowledge management, intellectual capital. And really, I actually was a consultant at one time too, before I became an academic. And, and I, I mainly consulted with small businesses. I did work with some fairly large listed firms and that. But the, I, I guess the ideology that I had as a consultant was to leave, leave the knowledge or the capacity in the business to actually do something. So this is one of the things that I think is really, really important that we need to do is understand that these consulting jobs are not just to give advice. It's also part of, you know, learning, you know, part of the learning organisation. And we're not seeing this. If you're just kind of going, okay, we'll bring in outside expertise, then we're, we're admitting we don't have that kind of expertise in our own government. And this is like the, the whittling down of the, of the public sector. We need to build capacity. We need to, we need to have those internal resources and capacities within the government to do this. This is a function of executive government, right? And now what we're doing is subcontracting the function of executive government out to the, out to the big firms. That's not the way it's supposed to work. We, we, we're supposed to have an independent part to make sure that we have the checks and balances within our, our, our legal system, right? In order to make sure that the thing functions correctly. Now, we just had yesterday in the, in the newspaper with the ATO and the, and, and the PWC coming together and making an arrangement back in March. At the same time, they did, they're not disclosing it because again, it's untransparent. They're not, they're not actually disclosing that this arrangement was done because of the, the tax, of the tax scandal, right? And yet the ATO, the head of ATO was saying in the newspaper, well, we were aware of it. We did discuss it with the federal police back in two thousand and nineteen. But we didn't have enough information, so we didn't do anything about it. I mean, isn't that the job of executive government is to actually go out and find that information? Thank you very much. So I, I think that's part of the problem is that we've got people sitting in, in the public sector who are, you know, as I say, maybe scared of giving an opinion, maybe scared of, you know, what's going to happen if something goes wrong with that opinion, might get crucified in the press or whatever else. But if we have competent people, we hire competent people and we bring them in with the requisite skills to do these jobs. And yes, we need to pay them correct, you know, amount of money. That's good. But then you had the head of PWC, I think, in an inquiry, you know, he gets paid, I think it was thirteen times the salary of the Prime Minister. How do you justify it?
Four point five.
And I'm sure, I'm sure we can hire very competent people to, to be there. We, we have a bit of a brain drain and we, you know, we've got lots of, we, we don't have so much unemployment at the moment. And there's, you know, there's a shortage of accountants and so forth. Which is even more important to develop those skills internally, to make sure that we have those skills. That's, you know, it's a future planning. Part of my PhD research was working with the New South Wales Department of Land. You know, so that was a, a really interesting project. We wrote, I think we wrote about twelve papers out of that project, right? But it was all about capacity building. It had this issue that, that people were retiring. And, you know, we had, we had to renew the organisation. Now, the people who were in the organisation, you know, it's the time when computers and everything coming into, they didn't want to know about it, you know, they had to get themselves a computer driver's licence to keep themselves employed. But at the end of the day, we, we worked help with them. We actually helped them develop their capacities. We helped digitise, we helped make things more efficient and so forth. If we don't do that, it's like a bathtub, you know, or a pond. If you don't keep putting fresh water in it and it stagnates, it's not going anywhere.
Could I just quickly ask you, because we do have chartered accountants, ANZ, coming to present to us in a little while. I understand that there is a, that consultants enjoy special protections when it comes to having their liability capped under that organisation scheme. I don't want to pronounce it wrong, but I think people call them KANS. So, cans, cans, yeah? I guess more Australian cans. So that CAN scheme limits their liability. And I understand that there's, there is New South Wales legislation that sets that in place, that's then sort of replicated in the other states and it's up for review next year. Do you have a view on that legislation and that liability scheme and what we might be doing or what we should be doing going forward with that?
This was debated in the Senate Inquiry. And I got a bit confused because the Deloitte's man, he took Brendan on and said, he's wrong in terms of capping. And he said, as a partner, we've got liability of seventy million dollars. And I couldn't work it out because I read the other material. It was capped at ten million. I think it's capped at ten million.
Certainly what their guidelines say.
Yeah. But I'll have to wait for Hansart to come out to see where, what the seventy million is.
Okay.
And, and see what's happening now. In the old days, in the good old days, when I was an auditor last century, the liquidator would actually sue the auditor. So there was a bit of a, bit of risk involved there. Then that seems to have gone out of fashion now. It doesn't seem to be the liquidators, maybe because the liquidators work in the big four. They don't seem to be doing that, that, that way of getting money back from liquidations. And the UK case, that was the government. And the UK case, that was the government liquidator. And what happened in the UK case, no one was willing to take the liquidation on because there was no money in the firm. So the government threw a hundred million pounds in to get some liquidations going. And the government liquidator decided to sue KPMG, not private liquidators. So that's changed over the last three decades.
Unfortunately, we've run out of time. We're five minutes over, unfortunately. I could, I could just keep going though for several hours. Maybe I'll send you some supplementary questions. Thank you so much for attending. To the extent that you took questions on notice or there will be supplementary questions, you will have 21 days to return them and the committee secretary will be in touch in relation to that. But we will now take a break and we'll be back at 1:45. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you and welcome back. I now welcome our next witnesses from Chartered Accountants A and Z. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, I'm Vanessa Chapman, I'm the Group Executive General Counsel and Corporate Assurance. And I will swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kristin Waddell, I'm the General Manager of Professional Standards at Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waddell. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I would, thank you Chair. First, we thank the Committee for this opportunity to discuss our submission and the role of Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand and of professional associations generally in government procurement and oversight frameworks. As I mentioned in my introduction, I am the General Counsel and the Group Executive for Corporate Assurance with responsibility for oversight of professional standards and conduct. And Kristin Waddell, my colleague, is the General Manager for Professional Standards. Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand, or CANs as we like to be sometimes called, fulfills multiple equally important roles. First, we're a membership body. Membership facilitates access to professional resources, support, and community for our members. Second, we're the only professional accounting organisation approved as a higher education provider under the Commonwealth Tertiary Education Quality and Standards Agency regime. Third, we're an advocate for our members and for the public good. And finally, through our professional standards and conduct function, we're a professional association with an approved professional standards scheme. We educate our members about the profession's code of ethics and the CANs bylaws, and we monitor compliance. Our disciplinary bodies are independent of CANs board and management. Any person can lodge a complaint about a member, and all complaints are assessed. A member's place of employment has no bearing on how disciplinary bodies conduct an investigation. Our disciplinary framework meets applicable domestic and international standards and best practice design principles. And as a result of our recent professional conduct framework review, it is to be further enhanced with additional powers to address misconduct of former members and provisions to more effectively address firm events. And those amendments are to be put to our membership for approval later this year. Our membership is made up of around 135,000 accounting, finance, and affiliated professionals, so individuals, and around 1,400 practice entities, that is companies and firms through which our members offer services to the public. Individual members comprise sole practitioners, individuals who work in small, medium-sized, or large firms, employees in government, in business, in finance, strategy, or other roles, individuals who operate as independent contractors, and academics across the education sector. Around 10% of our individual members work at large multidisciplinary firms. All partners of those firms, the big four, sorry, all partners of the large firms, the big four are our members, many of those being consultants providing services to government. They are all required to complete mandatory ethics training and are subject to our complaints process. There is no doubt, oversight of consulting is fragmented. Consultants to government, who are not members of any professional association, may have internal policies and codes of conduct, and they may also subscribe to the government's supplier code of conduct, but they may not be subject to any independent oversight of the information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you and welcome back. I now welcome our next witnesses from Chartered Accountants A and Z. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, I'm Vanessa Chapman, I'm the Group Executive General Counsel and Corporate Assurance. And I will swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kristin Waddell, I'm the General Manager of Professional Standards at Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waddell. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I would, thank you Chair. First, we thank the Committee for this opportunity to discuss our submission and the role of Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand and of professional associations generally in government procurement and oversight frameworks. As I mentioned in my introduction, I am the General Counsel and the Group Executive for Corporate Assurance with responsibility for oversight of professional standards and conduct. And Kristin Waddell, my colleague, is the General Manager for Professional Standards. Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand, or CANs as we like to be sometimes called, fulfils multiple equally important roles. First, we're a membership body. Membership facilitates access to professional resources, support, and community for our members. Second, we're the only professional accounting organisation approved as a higher education provider under the Commonwealth Tertiary Education Quality and Standards Agency regime. Third, we're an advocate for our members and for the public good. And finally, through our professional standards and conduct function, we're a professional association with an approved professional standards scheme. We educate our members about the profession's code of ethics and the CANs bylaws, and we monitor compliance. Our disciplinary bodies are independent of CANs board and management. Any person can lodge a complaint about a member, and all complaints are assessed. A member's place of employment has no bearing on how disciplinary bodies conduct an investigation. Our disciplinary framework meets applicable domestic and international standards and best practice design principles. And as a result of our recent professional conduct framework review, it is to be further enhanced with additional powers to address misconduct of former members and provisions to more effectively address firm events. And those amendments are to be put to our membership for approval later this year. Our membership is made up of around 135,000 accounting, finance, and affiliated professionals, so individuals, and around 1,400 practice entities, that is companies and firms through which our members offer services to the public. Individual members comprise sole practitioners, individuals who work in small, medium-sized, or large firms, employees in government, in business, in finance, strategy, or other roles, individuals who operate as independent contractors, and academics across the education sector. Around 10% of our individual members work at large multidisciplinary firms. All partners of those firms, the big four, sorry, all partners of the large firms, the big four are our members, many of those being consultants providing services to government. They are all required to complete mandatory ethics training and are subject to our complaints process. There is no doubt, oversight of consulting is fragmented. Consultants to government, who are not members of any professional association, may have internal policies and codes of conduct, and they may also subscribe to the government's supplier code of conduct, but they may not be subject to any independent oversight of the information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you and welcome back. I now welcome our next witnesses from Chartered Accountants A and Z. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, I'm Vanessa Chapman, I'm the Group Executive General Counsel and Corporate Assurance. And I will swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kristin Waddell, I'm the General Manager of Professional Standards at Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waddell. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I would, thank you Chair. First, we thank the Committee for this opportunity to discuss our submission and the role of Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand and of professional associations generally in government procurement and oversight frameworks. As I mentioned in my introduction, I am the General Counsel and the Group Executive for Corporate Assurance with responsibility for oversight of professional standards and conduct. And Kristin Waddell, my colleague, is the General Manager for Professional Standards. Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand, or CANs as we like to be sometimes called, fulfils multiple equally important roles. First, we're a membership body. Membership facilitates access to professional resources, support, and community for our members. Second, we're the only professional accounting organisation approved as a higher education provider under the Commonwealth Tertiary Education Quality and Standards Agency regime. Third, we're an advocate for our members and for the public good. And finally, through our professional standards and conduct function, we're a professional association with an approved professional standards scheme. We educate our members about the profession's code of ethics and the CANs bylaws, and we monitor compliance. Our disciplinary bodies are independent of CANs board and management. Any person can lodge a complaint about a member, and all complaints are assessed. A member's place of employment has no bearing on how disciplinary bodies conduct an investigation. Our disciplinary framework meets applicable domestic and international standards and best practice design principles. And as a result of our recent professional conduct framework review, it is to be further enhanced with additional powers to address misconduct of former members and provisions to more effectively address firm events. And those amendments are to be put to our membership for approval later this year. Our membership is made up of around 135,000 accounting, finance, and affiliated professionals, so individuals, and around 1,400 practice entities, that is companies and firms through which our members offer services to the public. Individual members comprise sole practitioners, individuals who work in small, medium-sized, or large firms, employees in government, in business, in finance, strategy, or other roles, individuals who operate as independent contractors, and academics across the education sector. Around 10% of our individual members work at large multidisciplinary firms. All partners of those firms, the big four, sorry, all partners of the large firms, the big four are our members, many of those being consultants providing services to government. They are all required to complete mandatory ethics training and are subject to our complaints process. There is no doubt, oversight of consulting is fragmented. Consultants to government, who are not members of any professional association, may have internal policies and codes of conduct, and they may also subscribe to the government's supplier code of conduct, but they may not be subject to any independent oversight of the information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you and welcome back. I now welcome our next witnesses from Chartered Accountants A and Z. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, I'm Vanessa Chapman, I'm the Group Executive General Counsel and Corporate Assurance. And I will swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waddell. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I would, thank you Chair. First, we thank the Committee for this opportunity to discuss our submission and the role of Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand and of professional associations generally in government procurement and oversight frameworks. As I mentioned in my introduction, I am the General Counsel and the Group Executive for Corporate Assurance with responsibility for oversight of professional standards and conduct. And Kristin Waddell, my colleague, is the General Manager for Professional Standards. Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand, or CANs as we like to be sometimes called, fulfils multiple equally important roles. First, we're a membership body. Membership facilitates access to professional resources, support, and community for our members. Second, we're the only professional accounting organisation approved as a higher education provider under the Commonwealth Tertiary Education Quality and Standards Agency regime. Third, we're an advocate for our members and for the public good. And finally, through our professional standards and conduct function, we're a professional association with an approved professional standards scheme. We educate our members about the profession's code of ethics and the CANs bylaws, and we monitor compliance. Our disciplinary bodies are independent of CANs board and management. Any person can lodge a complaint about a member, and all complaints are assessed. A member's place of employment has no bearing on how disciplinary bodies conduct an investigation. Our disciplinary framework meets applicable domestic and international standards and best practice design principles. And as a result of our recent professional conduct framework review, it is to be further enhanced with additional powers to address misconduct of former members and provisions to more effectively address firm events. And those amendments are to be put to our membership for approval later this year. Our membership is made up of around 135,000 accounting, finance, and affiliated professionals, so individuals, and around 1,400 practice entities, that is companies and firms through which our members offer services to the public. Individual members comprise sole practitioners, individuals who work in small, medium-sized, or large firms, employees in government, in business, in finance, strategy, or other roles, individuals who operate as independent contractors, and academics across the education sector. Around 10% of our individual members work at large multidisciplinary firms. All partners of those firms, the big four, sorry, all partners of the large firms, the big four are our members, many of those being consultants providing services to government. They are all required to complete mandatory ethics training and are subject to our complaints process. There is no doubt, oversight of consulting is fragmented. Consultants to government, who are not members of any professional association, may have internal policies and codes of conduct, and they may also subscribe to the government's supplier code of conduct, but they may not be subject to any independent oversight of the information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you and welcome back. I now welcome our next witnesses from Chartered Accountants A and Z. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, I'm Vanessa Chapman, I'm the Group Executive General Counsel and Corporate Assurance. And I will swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kristin Waddell, I'm the General Manager of Professional Standards at Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waddell. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I would, thank you Chair. First, we thank the Committee for this opportunity to discuss our submission and the role of Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand and of professional associations generally in government procurement and oversight frameworks. As I mentioned in my introduction, I am the General Counsel and the Group Executive for Corporate Assurance with responsibility for oversight of professional standards and conduct. And Kristin Waddell, my colleague, is the General Manager for Professional Standards. Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand, or CANs as we like to be sometimes called, fulfils multiple equally important roles. First, we're a membership body. Membership facilitates access to professional resources, support, and community for our members. Second, we're the only professional accounting organisation approved as a higher education provider under the Commonwealth Tertiary Education Quality and Standards Agency regime. Third, we're an advocate for our members and for the public good. And finally, through our professional standards and conduct function, we're a professional association with an approved professional standards scheme. We educate our members about the profession's code of ethics and the CANs bylaws, and we monitor compliance. Our disciplinary bodies are independent of CANs board and management. Any person can lodge a complaint about a member, and all complaints are assessed. A member's place of employment has no bearing on how disciplinary bodies conduct an investigation. Our disciplinary framework meets applicable domestic and international standards and best practice design principles. And as a result of our recent professional conduct framework review, it is to be further enhanced with additional powers to address misconduct of former members and provisions to more effectively address firm events. And those amendments are to be put to our membership for approval later this year. Our membership is made up of around 135,000 accounting, finance, and affiliated professionals, so individuals, and around 1,400 practice entities, that is companies and firms through which our members offer services to the public. Individual members comprise sole practitioners, individuals who work in small, medium-sized, or large firms, employees in government, in business, in finance, strategy, or other roles, individuals who operate as independent contractors, and academics across the education sector. Around 10% of our individual members work at large multidisciplinary firms. All partners of those firms, the big four, sorry, all partners of the large firms, the big four are our members, many of those being consultants providing services to government. They are all required to complete mandatory ethics training and are subject to our complaints process. There is no doubt, oversight of consulting is fragmented. Consultants to government, who are not members of any professional association, may have internal policies and codes of conduct, and they may also subscribe to the government's supplier code of conduct, but they may not be subject to any independent oversight of the information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you and welcome back. I now welcome our next witnesses from Chartered Accountants A and Z. Could you please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you, I'm Vanessa Chapman, I'm the Group Executive General Counsel and Corporate Assurance. And I will swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kristin Waddell, I'm the General Manager of Professional Standards at Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kristin Waddell, I'm the General Manager of Professional Standards at Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kristin Waddell, I'm the General Manager of Professional Standards at Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you very much, Ms. Waddell. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
I would, thank you Chair. First, we thank the Committee for this opportunity to discuss our submission and the role of Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand and of professional associations generally in government procurement and oversight frameworks. As I mentioned in my introduction, I am the General Counsel and the Group Executive for Corporate Assurance with responsibility for oversight of professional standards and conduct. And Kristin Waddell, my colleague, is the General Manager for Professional Standards. Chartered Accountants Australia New Zealand, or CANs as we like to be sometimes called, fulfils multiple equally important roles. First, we're a membership body. Membership facilitates access to professional resources, support, and community for our members. Second, we're the only professional accounting organisation approved as a higher education provider under the Commonwealth Tertiary Education Quality and Standards Agency regime. Third, we're an advocate for our members and for the public good. And finally, through our professional standards and conduct function, we're a professional association with an approved professional standards scheme. Consultants to government, who are not members of any professional association, may have internal policies and codes of conduct, and they may also subscribe to the government's supplier code of conduct, but they may not be subject to any independent oversight or enforcement of ethical behaviour. We have four suggestions: that the New South Wales Government implement the recommendations made by the New South Wales Auditor General in full, including those relating to enhanced procurement and project management practices; two, that agencies should consider carefully the selection criteria for material engagements, and consider whether membership of a professional association is a minimum requirement; three, agencies should consider implementing contractual mechanisms, such as requiring firms or lead engagement partners to notify the agency if they or other key personnel are subject of a professional disciplinary investigation, and which could trigger review rights under the contract with the agency; and fourth, for New South Wales procurement to consider including referral to professional associations as a potential outcome of a code breach under the New South Wales Supplier's Code of Conduct. CANs welcomes the opportunity to work with governments, our profession, and other stakeholders to develop solutions. We now welcome your questions and the opportunity to clarify any of our statements.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your submission and for attending here today. Could we just start? A number of us were involved in the, in this committee, as it then was, the Public Accountability Committee's inquiry into the transport asset holding entity. And as you will be aware, there was a finding in that inquiry that it was inappropriate for New South Wales Treasury in many ways to provide instructions and act in relation to KPMG in certain ways, including, you know, in relation to certain partners. There was also just a number of quite concerning allegations and assertions that were raised, and a number of important findings made in that report, which I understand had, has led now to KPMG accepting some public responsibility for the failings in that process. Could you tell me, have you begun an investigation into that matter? And if so, sort of who is the subject of that investigation? Is it KPMG itself or particular people? Any information you can give me would be, would be much appreciated.
Certainly. I can confirm that we made a public statement to the Senate Inquiry, and that statement confirms that our Professional Conduct Committee, so an Investigations Committee, initiated some preliminary inquiries in relation to the Tahiti matter in late 2021, and then an investigation following the conclusion of public hearings and the tabling of the report of the Public Accountability Committee in 2022. That investigation is ongoing. Under our bylaws, PCC investigations are confidential, and the reason for confidentiality is that whilst there is an investigation underway and prior to any findings being made, there is a real risk of harm and reputational damage to any individuals who may be involved. Pending the conclusion of the PCC investigation, CANs is precluded by the bylaws from making public statements which would undermine or prejudice that PCC investigation.
So, that investigation, just so I'm clear, when you say it's commenced, just for someone who doesn't understand sort of how that, those inquiries are normally sort of run, so it's a professional conduct inquiry, is, are there particular people appointed to investigate? Is there a timeline? Are there terms of reference? What, what sort of happens around the process there?
Chair, could I ask a very, very, very supplementary question? In your submission, you have a table which shows what the PCC does, what your disciplinary tribunal... So if I could just add to the chair's question and say, why the PCC and not the disciplinary tribunal? Because the PCC seems to not be able to bar a member for certain amounts of years, et cetera. So if you could add that to the chair's question?
Good question. Thank you.
So, thank you. So, our system, our framework, the design of the framework is very consistent with similar professional bodies. So, the investigation and prosecutorial functions are undertaken by the PCC. Serious matters that go to the disciplinary tribunal are disciplinary findings, and the PCC prosecutes matters at the disciplinary tribunal. So in many ways, it's very similar to the, to a, almost a European approach to truth finding and, and inquiry. So the PCC undertakes an investigation that typically takes about six months, four to six months, which then is determining questions of fact, looking at evidence, making sort of inquiries as it sees fit. And just to answer your question, Chair, about the committees and the functions and how they're designed, under our bylaws, the PCC, the DT, disciplinary tribunal, and the appeals tribunal are permanent bodies of the, of the organisation, completely independent of our staff. The Professional Conduct Committee is empaneled as a minimum of three members, two who are senior members from the profession who understand the technical and/or the other contextual arrangements, or the context of a particular complaint, and a layperson who brings a public interest perspective. So, on our current PCC panel, we have ethicists, lawyers, and a range of other non-accountants who bring a different perspective. In the course of a PCC investigation, the PCC will meet multiple times to consider information, to consider public available information, reports, a range of sources of information will be considered, and they'll make a decision about how they want to proceed and whether there is anything of interest.
And then it goes to the DT?
It may do. It may do. So in the normal, sorry, to...
It's all right. Go ahead.
In the normal course of an investigation, where, bear in mind that the DT is, when matters are referred to the disciplinary tribunal, it's in relation to a specific member, when the PCC forms the view that there is a case and has adequate evidence and is satisfied that on the evidence a decision could be made, they may refer the matter to the disciplinary tribunal. And at that point, that disciplinary tribunal hearing is scheduled, it's a public hearing, it can be, members of the public may attend. It is subject, of course, to certain confidentiality provisions around, yeah, reporting publicly because of appeal rights that are available to the member in that context, but that is a separate process at that point.
So, in this particular case, with respect, this committee did a lot of the work already in relation to what went wrong at KPMG when it came to the Tahiti matter. There was a huge amount of evidence provided to this committee. You've just told us that normally one of these inquiries takes four to six months. This one's been going since late 21. This seems longer than the amount of time it took ICAC to look into the, you know, Berdych Liam matter. This is quite a long period of time before we've got a finding out at the PSC. PCC, did you say? Sorry. So, why, why is it taking so long?
Again, I can't comment on detail because I'm not privy to the, to the deliberations of the PCC. However, I would observe that there are a number of other inquiries that have been held. The Auditor General's report in, I think, February this year, and the, March, and the ICAC findings as well have been of interest.
Yeah. But clearly, this, you know, there was some serious wrongdoing that this committee found. When I heard that an inquiry had been commenced by CANs, I was quite, you know, sort of, I felt that, you know, it was being taken seriously and you were doing something about it. There's nobody else, as I understand it, who can look into this matter. Meanwhile, KPMG is still getting government work and still doing everything that it's always done. Do you think that this is an acceptable period of time for an investigation of this nature to take?
So, in any given year, we receive about 250 complaints. And in Australia, that's in Australia, and across Australia, New Zealand, 400 in total. So of those 250 complaints, most are resolved within, as I said, nine months. At the moment, there are only 14 complaints that have been on foot, or matters, investigations which have been on foot for more than 12 months. And as a general principle, in matters that we've initiated, or where the PCC has initiated investigation of its own volition, it can make and set its own timeframes and timetable. And obviously, in terms, as I said before, in terms of the consideration of information and new information and making inquiries, it forms its own view about what inquiries it wishes to make and then to consider that information.
So did the CANs board instruct the PCC to do this, or did the PCC do it of its own accord?
No. The PCC did this of their own accord.
Right. And does the board have any oversight of, of how long processes are taking?
So, yes, in, in a way. So the Professional Conduct Oversight Committee is another independent body...
Yep.
...which oversees the performance of the disciplinary bodies. And the key metrics, the key measures of performance that the PCOC is, examines are the time taken from initiation of complaint through to resolution.
I understand from the Senate evidence that the PCC has still not even spoken with former KPMG partner Brendan Lyon. Again, this has been running now for almost two years. Do you think that anything's actually been done with this inquiry? Or was it just started, but it's just waiting to actually commence in full? What assurance are you given that there's actually an inquiry on foot as opposed to an inquiry having just been referred to be dealt with eventually?
So the instructions that I'm given by the conduct staff regularly, in terms of updates, are at the process level. This is where things are up to. I don't have insight or any, in particular, any intelligence about specifics, because as I said, the PCC investigation process is confidential.
Can you provide this committee, on a confidential basis, with more information? So not in the context of this hearing, but on notice, information on exactly what is happening with that inquiry? Because you can understand that from our perspective, we have heard a lot of assurances from the, the big four, and we are looking to you to give us some assurance that there is actually a regulatory regime in place that, you know, investigates and takes action. Are you able to give this committee on notice, on a confidential basis, details about what has actually happened with that investigation?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. In terms of, sorry, I will pause because I know that I do speak sometimes and not allow Dr. Kane to...
No, it depends. If you want to keep going, then I can go. Either way, it's to the chair.
Sure. Just let me know.
Yep.
So, is, just in terms of, I guess, just in terms of the, the structure of CANs, who sits on the board? How's that sort of, you know, so you've got, you said you've got, I forget how many members, and those members are all partners of the big four members? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Sorry. Can you explain again the memberships of, of CANs, and who sits on the board and how they get elected?
So the structure of the board is, is determined by our bylaws. So, we have a separate council. The council is made up of representatives of members from across the various regions. So we have appointed council members from each of the states of Australia, from four of the regions in New Zealand, from some of our region, some of our Asian regions, and one rest of world which covers the UK and the United States. So the council is the body which has authority to appoint directors to the board on recommendation from a nominations and governance committee, which is entirely independent, made up of three independent members. The current composition of the board is such that there are two directors who have an affiliation to large firms. One is an auditor, another is a senior director. The remaining member directors, those who've come from an accounting background, come from a variety of backgrounds, from business, from small, you know, own sole practitioners. And then we have two independent directors who are from outside of accounting, completely independent.
Thank you. So the two that you said are connected to the big firms, is that a, have you, I don't know, is there someone for KPMG on the board?
Yes, there is.
Who is that?
That's Penny Stragolinos.
Okay. And who's the other person that you mentioned?
Tenashi Kamigira, from Deloitte.
From Deloitte. Okay. Thank you. And have, has CANs struck off any partner from the big four in the last seven years?
There are currently nine disciplinary decisions on our disciplinary decisions register that relate to either employees or partners from the big four. The number of those which resulted in suspension or termination, I believe, are, one struck off, sorry, two struck off and two suspended.
Could I, could I ask a further question about, I guess, these sanctions? But also goes back to my question about the PCC and the disciplinary tribunal. I'm not sure that I'm still entirely clear. And it goes a little bit to, I guess, how I pick the process appears to be. So, PCC can refer matters to itself, but it can then also say this goes on to the disciplinary tribunal. But it, it also can sanction. So I want to know, I'm interested in what the line is between the sanctions that PCC decides to impose itself, because currently we have KPMG still in that process. I guess what the threshold is for disciplinary matters to be taken out of the PCC, which seems to have a list of sanctions it can impose. So what's that threshold? And the other question related to this is, you mentioned that you had 250-odd issues a year that you're investigating. I would have thought, or I'd like to know about your triage process, because I imagine, you know, KPMG as opposed to Joe Bloggs' accountant down the road. How have you triaged that, meaning that it's still taken this long? So there was two questions there.
Thank you. I might start with the second question first, if, if that's, if that's all right. The triaging process is very important, and that is because when matters come to the attention of the PCC that involve real issues of practical harm to consumers or to clients, it must act swiftly. You can appreciate that with a membership of 135,000 members, most of whom take their ethical obligations incredibly seriously, that when there is any malfeasance or evidence of deviation from expected norms and standards of behaviour, the PCC will act particularly quickly if there's a real risk of harm to consumers, so fraud, or if there's a risk of defogation, client monies, for example, being, being dissipated. The PCC can act quickly and refer a matter to the disciplinary tribunal for an interim suspension order, and that has happened on a number of occasions, and I can provide those details and those numbers. So triaging does occur in that context. There's a process by which the, the conduct team allocate matters between the investigators on that team. Sorry, your first question, I think...
So there was a threshold?
The threshold.
The threshold. So it seems that the PCC, because at first, when you were explaining it, it sounded like it was the investigative arm that then handed off. But that, according to your table, doesn't seem to be the case. It seems to be able to decide whether it issues a sanction or whether it sends it up, and I just wondered what those thresholds were.
Okay. Thanks. So in that regard, it's actually, as part of the disciplinary process, it's going through an assessment and determining whether a matter can be resolved by consent. So it cannot issue sanctions of its own volition. It's not a decision maker. It is entirely investigative and prosecutorial. But like any investigative function, it can, if there is a, if a matter doesn't warrant suspension or termination of the member, if it's not serious enough to require suspension or termination, then the PCC is, may, offer a suspend, sorry, a consent order agreement to the member as a way of expediting or expeditiously resolving a matter. Under those sorts of consent order agreements, publicity orders and confidentiality provisions may be waived. So...
Might I make a suggestion? That the submission might need to be reconsidered?
Clarified.
Because there is a table which says, which lists your three committees, and then lists the, the sanction that they can impose and ticks next to it. So you can understand my misunderstanding about whether that can be imposed by that committee. I wanted to ask...
Sorry, can I just jump in one moment? The, the PCC is, does have an investigative function, and to a certain point, in accordance with the bylaws, it can impose sanctions. There's a threshold which is, and I was trying to find it in our bylaws where you'd give the reference, if the matter is in the, it's a combination of whether the sanction is outside of the scope of the PCC, or if it's of public interest, it's referred through to the DT. But it's, there's a sort of a passageway. Everything must come through the PCC to the DT and then to the AT.
I'm not clear on the thresholds, but perhaps on notice you might be able to provide that information, which would clarify that and maybe a reframing of that table.
Thank you.
It is a footnote on that bit. So you were saying that consent, you can have a consent order made. So when I asked you before how many partners have been struck off, um, is that being struck off because there was no consent order or was that a?
It would have been because there was a direct referral or there was a referral through to the disciplinary tribunal. So just to clarify, um, Dr Kane, footnote sixteen on that table takes, I know, footnotes are not ideal. But the P C C can only impose those disciplinary sanctions via, via orders. And in the absence of an agreed order, those sanctions can only be imposed by the disciplinary tribunal. So there are processes, it's, it's intended to expedite the resolution of matters that are fairly straightforward. There's no removal of the member under those consent order agreements. And that's appropriate because removal of the member from the body is considered to be the most serious sanction. That can be imposed on a member. It is actually, um, all of these orders, all of these sanctions are potentially reportable by members to external regulators or agencies. They may also be reportable to insurers under the terms of professional indemnity policies. There are a range of notifications which a member might need to make depending on their practice and what else they might.
Can I ask a question related to that? And it goes to, you know, the types of members that you had, so you said that ten percent of your membership. Um, is in that sort of consultancy field. And we've had submissions which have talked about the ambiguity about professional associations for consultants and where they might fit. And whether there is any, any actual sort of standards that do apply. So if you're suggesting that part of your process might be, or that there are requirements or other requirements for other regulators to be informed. That wouldn't be the case, would it, for consult, where would you, where would you inform? Who would you inform? What regulator would you inform if you found that a consultant had breached that didn't fit into your other categories of members? Where would that go?
No, it depends on what the other, what the consultant's other obligations might be. So for example, if we had a member who is a partner in a firm and they are also a legal practitioner. Then the Law Society may be a regulator or a professional body that could be informed of an outcome.
But that's only if they were captured by some other professional bodies.
Correct.
So there is, so in essence, there is a gap for those who aren't captured by other standards.
Correct, and that goes to the point in our opening statement that there is a, there is some fragmentation and there are also just gaps.
Hmm.
So there will be some consultants who, who by virtue of not having a professional discipline. May not be captured by any external oversight. And in that situation, the only, only real uh power the government agencies has. Is through the procurement framework and the supplier code of conduct.
Could I, um, can I just cover off on the Tahiti issue and then I'll pass over to um my colleague, Mr Farlow? Um, just when we're looking then, when we come back to the very serious matters. That were covered in this committee's Tahiti inquiry, um, that looked at the behaviour and. Um, what appears on the face of it to be quite a lot of misconduct on the part of K P M G, to which K P M G have admitted they made mistakes. Um, we are, you know, almost two years down the track. My understanding from what you're now saying is that some of the, I guess, the disciplinary action that might be taken is that those partners. That some sort of a, you know, partners involved might have, um, might have some recommendations made that they would be struck off. Or um, there would be some serious repercussions for them. Um, is that, is that correct? That we're kind of sitting waiting to see whether or not those partners are going to have that level of consequence taken against them?
Again, rather than speaking about the matter in particular, in general, when the P C C becomes aware of a very high profile matter. As that one was.
Yeah.
And where there is a lot of material, a lot of, a high volume of material. It has to be assessed and it has to be considered to determine first of all, um, to what extent any of that.
Hmm.
Constitutes, any of the material indicates or constitutes a prima facie case.
So when I look at the New South Wales tender um site, we have almost a million dollars. Of contracts being signed between just New South Wales Transport and K P M G since the twenty third of July, that's just five days ago. We are continuing to put in place contracts with a company that may be found under your processes. Um, to have acted in a manner not befitting of that entity. Are you saying that really the only, um, I guess, power we have here is just to not contract with them? Is, is the government, should we be pausing our contracts with K P M G while we await? The results of your investigations?
To be very clear, Chair, our process is about our members. So partners of K P M G are our members. K P M G itself as a firm is not a member. There is a very important process which New South Wales government agencies and all agencies ought to be going through. With the awards of contracts, particularly material contracts.
Hmm.
And my understanding is that the government's implementation of some of the enhancements to the procurement framework. Uh, are intended to make those awards uh much more cohesive, cogent, et cetera. Uh, and it would be on the agencies to make those inquiries.
Yeah.
Of firms, and if, if the agencies wish to take a very prudent approach, that would be open to the agencies to do so.
Sure, because we're looking at twenty billion dollars of, of public money being lost at the hands of. And, you know, one of the big four acting inappropriately. And we have an inquiry, the only inquiry we can rely on, being your inquiry you're running, that's now taken well over a year and a half. I'm struggling to understand why it's not being taken as seriously as it should be. You talked about public harm or loss. Twenty billion dollars to the New South Wales public, pretty significant harm, wouldn't you say?
I certainly don't shy away from the fact that that indirect harm is of significance. There's no doubt about that. So earlier when I mentioned the triaging system and the imminent harm to consumers. It's predicated on the basis that the P C C will look at individual clients and complainants. You know, often, you know, clients who cannot afford to lose any money. And so the priority in those cases is to, is to act swiftly. Uh, in relation to the P C C investigation of this particular Tahiti matter, as I said, this has been a complex matter. And until the P C C has made a decision about how it wants to conclude the matter. I'm unable to give you any more information other than the confidential information that I've already undertaken to provide.
Mr Farlow, would you allow me one?
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Through the chair. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, if I could just ask, given what you've just described, given the question that the chair has just asked. And given the submissions that we've had made to us that are public from eminent academics in the field. Um, do you think it's right that there's quite a lot of criticism of self-regulation of the professions in this way? Given that there seems to be very few other avenues to sanction those who are engaged in quite large-scale wrongdoing. I just wanted your comments on what seems to be very legitimate criticism that self-regulation simply is not enough and is not working.
So I might first of all explain that we work within what I would call a co-regulatory framework. So there are a number of regulators who have a range of statutory responsibilities in relation to the oversight of consultants. Our role, C A N's role, as I said, is to enforce the Code of Ethics and the C A N's bylaws. The C A N's bylaws specify that a member can be disciplined for a range of matters, things that have occurred. As well as breaches of the Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics, five fundamental principles, integrity, confidentiality, professional care and skill, professional behaviour and objectivity. Objectivity goes to conflicts of interest. Objectivity and conflicts of interest are not unlawful or illegal, they occur, but they must be managed. And the risk or the issue for organisations, professional associations that have an oversight in relation to. Codes of ethics that include conflicts of interest is to assess and understand to what extent. And, uh, you know, those, those requirements, those obligations, those ethical duties have been observed or not observed.
Just to pick up on that complicated regulatory environment. So in terms of professional accounting bodies, of course, there is C A Ns, but there's also CPA and Institute of Public Accountants, is that correct?
That's correct in Australia, yes.
Yes, so how do you work with those organisations and what is the common set of standards that you might have in place?
The, all accountants in Australia operate under a common set of accounting and auditing standards and Code of Ethics.
Yeah.
Um.
What were the A, double A S B, are they still?
So the double A S B.
And then in terms of the Code of Ethics, what's that?
The Code of Ethics is set by the Accounting Professional Ethics Standards Board.
Okay.
And that's then, and all of those are in turn based on global standards set by international standard setters. Um, the, each of the three bodies have variations in their bylaws and so forth. But it's the same Code of Ethics for all accountants in Australia.
Okay, so that's uniform.
Yes.
So in an instance where you have, so picking up on um. Your statements with respect to partners and the partners who may not be accounting partners. Or may not be traditionally accountants, but are your members. Is that similar for the CPA and for the Institute of Public Accountants as well? Do they have that sort of similar membership class?
I don't have any. That's not information that's available to me.
Um, and there was a statement you made in terms of partners, and I'm not sure if I got this correct or not. But are all partners of the Big Four, Big Four firms required to be members of the C A? Or are they required to be members of one of the three associate bodies?
One of the three.
So it's one of the three associate bodies, okay, thank you, just for clarification. Um, now, I guess, in a sense, you're here answering questions. Um, on behalf of your organisation and accountants, but a lot of the issues we're looking at don't really relate to accountants. Of course, there's an issue that Ms Boy, the chair, has raised that may impact accountants. But we're talking about a broader consulting class, many of whom are not accountants. Um, what do you see as the gap, so to speak, in the professional regulatory market? That exists for broad consultants who may not be accountants, may not be lawyers, may not be covered under any other organisation. Do you see there is an opportunity or a requirement that we should have some sort of professional standards board for those organisations? Sorry, for those individuals, I should say, not organisations.
That's a good question. There are, and I might take, actually, I could, I could start to answer it. So lawyers, engineers, accountants, um, uh, help me out here, what other? Medical professionals, so any, any consultant, for example, within a large firm who is a, has a medical qualification. And, you know, health, some of the health teams do, uh, would be subject potentially to a range of professional standards around professional behaviour. Um, outside of practice. There is, uh, historically, it's, it's well established that professional standards don't just mean. Behaviour at work or inside the practice of the profession, it can be broader, so encompasses behaviour, personal behaviour and personal conduct. There would be some consultants potentially in the technology and I T space, cyber security. It, to the, to my knowledge, there are some disciplines that are not necessarily professionalised. And I'm happy to.
Or at least have the requirement, like they might have, so for instance, I think in I T, like the Australian Computer Society or something. But they may not be required to be registered in order to practise yet.
So there's, there's a, there's a, there's probably two extremes. There are some consultants who have no professional association at all, and then there are others who may have many.
Hmm.
They may be lawyers and accountants, they may be lawyers and engineers. So we're, we're finding that there's, you know, some have three or four regulators or oversight bodies or associations that are looking at their behaviour. And others will have none. So there's a, there's an opportunity to maybe look at that.
Hmm, and, and I imagine, of course, with that, there's a continuing professional development requirement for each of those as well, which is time and money for all. So looking at another class, for instance, may be problematic in itself. Um, in terms of those recommendations that you were making to us out of your submission. Um, in terms of the referral to professional associations and the potential for the government to be able to take that step. In procurement, how would you see that working?
Uh, so I would observe that the supplier code of conduct uh makes it very clear to. Uh, to providers of services to government that in the event of a breach of the code of conduct. They may be, or the lead partner or the firm, the supplier, may be referred to external agencies. Those external agencies include criminal enforcement, they include, you know, referral for corruption, perhaps inquiries. There's, and that also the contract may be terminated, there's very little in between. It may well be that in terms of an engagement, uh, the agency may not wish to terminate the contract, may be quite comfortable or happy with. The contract, but may have some reservations about the, uh, the team providing services. Referral to a professional body for what may be a, an ethical failing is an opportunity or an option. That should be available to agencies as, as it is to any complainant or to any, uh, any client of the, of a firm. Or of a service provider.
Uh, now, you know, and I don't know if you caught our last witness, um, but there was some suggestion of cheating on ethics exams. Um, from consulting firms, is that anything you wish to comment on or have any information on at all as to that occurring in Australia?
Well, certainly the matter of the K P M G matter from twenty twenty two, twenty one? Sorry, I've lost track of time, it's twenty one. Um, raised that as a serious issue for, uh, for professional accounting organisations around the world, it's fair to say. Uh, there is, uh, there was a finding out of, uh, the P C C did conduct an investigation into that matter. And the Senate, the submission that we made to the Senate Inquiry provides a little bit more detail into the P C C's decision-making. And process around that particular matter. Since then, we've been, as an organisation, um, quite considered in our engagement with the firms. To understand what are your policies, what are your procedures and what are you doing when you find any issues? And we continue to make those inquiries. Um, more broadly, and Kristin and I will be able to go into this in more detail, probably in a few weeks. When we have had time to finalise our proposals and plans. But quality review is a process that we undertake, including in relation to the large firms. Uh, and there is an opportunity to consider how that review programme could be evolved and expanded. To include deeper inquiries into those sorts of matters, including to the efficacy of the existing policies.
So has there been the evidence of that occurring in Australia?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Not to my knowledge. There are, um, as I said, we write to the firms, we understand their policies. Uh, we, they understand the expectations that C A Ns has of them when there are matters, when there are issues that arise. Uh, and they're expected to support their employees who are our members' obligations around self-disclosure.
Thank you.
Can I ask, when you look at P W C and its tax scandals, we've got K P M G with the Tahiti thing, with the ethics exam scandals. Um, we've got Deloitte with its apparent theft of defence information. Um, E Y and its recent cultural review, um, with the Broderick Report. There is a lot of scandal going on right now. Do you need something different as a regulator? Do you need more resources? Are you looking for some sort of reform to allow the regulator to, I guess, more quickly get on top of? All of these sort of, you know, cascading scandals?
In terms of our framework, the Professional Conduct Framework Review that we've just concluded. And the results that we released outline two measures that we believe we need to be more effective. One is to be able to examine former members, absolutely. The second is in relation to operationalising the existing, um, the existing rules that relate to firm events. The firm events provision, um, it may take some explaining. But under our existing framework, as I said before, members who are partners in firms, where the firm has suffered a firm event. Have a responsibility to notify the P C C of that matter and to submit to an examination. The particular, the rules that we currently have are not in, completely resolved. You know, some, some of the rules don't work in the context of a notification of a firm event. So the P C, the Professional Conduct Framework Review proposals relate to. So the P C, uh, the professional conduct framework review proposals relate to, uh, relate to, streamlining the notification process so that a single partner may make a notification on behalf of all other partners. Uh, streamlining the, um, the processes by which investigations occur, so that single partner can represent all other partners, so you can imagine that it would be very, um, practically difficult to have all partners present before the P C C, so having a single partner representation is helpful. And then finally, we've proposed a, a seri- a material increase, significant increase in the fines that may apply to firm events. So under our current rule framework, the P C C may, uh, agree a fine of about, of twenty, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, and at the disciplinary tribunal up to fifty thousand dollars, that's for individual members. And the proposal that we're taking to our members for approval later in the year is to increase that to fifty thou- sorry, one hundred thousand dollars at the P C C level and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the disciplinary tribunal level in relation to firm events. This will give those bodies a significant additional sanction to deal with, uh, to deal with matters which may not be able to be attributed specifically to a partner.
Chair, just quickly, on, on those sanctions, just looking at down at the list of sanctions here and you just touched on some of the fine sanctions. What is the jurisdiction of enforceability, like if you get, um, a member wanting to, uh, uh, go beyond the appeals process? In other words, I don't agree with the fifty thousand dollar fine, um, what, what jurisdiction would that be heard in?
So, um, yeah, so, well, not so much judicial review. So the, the, a member who, um, is disputes a fine, who believes that a fine is unenforceable, could initiate proceedings on the basis that the fine is voidable as a penalty. Uh, that would be, um, a, a course of action that would be open, but the member would have to prove that it's entirely out of proportion to the harm caused by their action.
So ultimately, when, when you join your organisation, you sign up to this, this sort of, and, and would you have had many cases where the sanctions have been challenged in a court?
I believe twenty years ago, there was a, a case taken on enforceability, and the member in that case was successful because there was, uh, the finding was that there had been a, um, uh, failure to provide natural justice.
Chair, could I?
Yeah, good.
Could I ask a follow-up on, on a similar issue, I guess? Um, I'm just getting my head around your organisation and where it fits. So you're both a professional association and a regulator, and you're in competition for membership with other associations who are also professional associations and quasi-regulators. Is there not a conflict of interest in that package that also probably needs to be explained, outlined and considered?
I, I certainly accept, um, the premise of the question. One of the significant structural, uh, approaches that we take to ensure there is no conflict of interest is to have all of the disciplinary decisions made by those independent disciplinary bodies without regard to matters like, you know, uh, external timeframes or with, sorry, without reference to the, the broader organisational needs or requirements. It's a, it's a very incisive, single, uh, inquiry by a set of, um, prof- professional disciplinary bodies who have to adhere to the procedural requirements, but to the bylaws, and make a decision in a specific way in order for it to be defensible and enforceable.
So could I ask what y- your particular value proposition is to an accountant or other potential member that differentiates you from the other professional associations that they could join?
So, so I certainly can. So chartered accountants, Australia and New Zealand has a long and proud history in Australia, and we, uh, by amalgamation with the New Zealand Institute of Chartered Accountants, in twenty fourteen, fifteen, uh, it brought together those two bodies, both of which have long and proud histories. Being a chartered accountant, um, brings with it a certain, um, reputation and it's, it's a mark of quality. It's a rigorous programme. Our graduate diploma of chartered accounting is a rigorous, uh, programme of education that's highly regarded in the marketplace and by employers. Uh, our market and value proposition is to attract the best and brightest, um, accounting and business and finance graduates, and to train them uh, and to ensure that they are able to go out into the, uh, into business and to work, and to make a difference to, to use our, um, to, to use our very carefully constructed line to make a difference in the communities in which they work and live.
If I can just point, in a sense, and it might be helpful. It's not just a matter of choice, is it? You have to do a certain assessment, don't you, to become a chartered accountant or a C P A or the like, just, for way of reference, yeah?
Yeah, so each of the professional associations have entry level exams?
Each one would have similar.
Well, no, ours is actually a graduate diploma.
They do vary.
And so ours is a graduate diploma, the other two isn't recognised as such. Um, that said, after an extended period of time, a, a chartered accountant can go, can, can have a membership of C P A and vice versa, but it's after, I think it's ten years of membership.
So from an, from an outsider's perspective, it doesn't look like the, at least when it comes to things like Taihei and K P M G, it doesn't look like the disciplinary, um, function of your orga- organisation is particularly effective. Is there a risk that if you made a more effective disciplinary process, you would lose members?
On the contrary, so the strong messaging we get from our members is that they appreciate and want to see the disciplinary process at work. And one of the reasons, um, we've made quite a number of statements around the P W C tax matter is to ensure that our members understand what is happening. And so to the premise of your question, would members leave if the, if the disciplinary process were more rigorous? Uh, that's not my view.
But with, with all, with all due respect, I mean, the Chair's pointed this out before. The P W C matter, the K P M G matter were largely byproducts of a, um, parliamentary committee process and whistleblowers. It wasn't generic, um, incipient in and of the associations bringing it to light. So wouldn't a public perception be created that, look, people are joining these organisations because they want advocacy, they want to keep up with latest tax laws, whatever, and we're going to probably, they're probably going to downplay disciplinary because I'm paying them to be a member. So the perception has been created by virtue of what's happened, is, is that it's just dysfunctional. Like, like government should actually step in and directly regulate. Can, can you see that? I mean, that's the message we, we're getting as parliamentarians and the perception's certainly being created.
I can appreciate that. I think the important thing to bear in mind about the P W C matter is that it was the T P B orders that were published in January which brought the, the matter to light. Uh, and of course, that then was, um, those, those orders, the publication of those orders, um, were, uh, acted upon, including by a number of, um, journalists who've done an exceptional job in bringing a number of things to surface. Uh, it is, from my perspective, on the day, or on the day of the T P B order publication, when we became aware, when Chartered Accountants Australia and New Zealand became aware, um, of the orders, the P C C, um, file was opened and the matter was initiated and investigation was commenced. So to the point you make about, does there need to be a single government agency that regulates ethics? It's ultimately a matter for government, how that works with state and federal, it would need to be determined. But best practice regulation would require there to be a fairly considered and thoughtful consideration of how that would apply across a range of different professions and how it would potentially intersect with all of the different statutory arrangements that already exist.
And, but, I, just one other point on that. There was all, to bring some, I guess, some, uh, another light to it. During the course of last year, we actually investigated and concluded four hundred and sixteen professional conduct matters. So, I'm, I'm, there, there, there are the ones that are in profile at the moment that are taking a long time. But we, you know, please don't forget, there was four hundred and sixteen other instances where members were investigated and concluded and held to account.
You, you said before though, and just clarify, I, I understand that in a previous answer, there was reference made to the review of the remit of the, the P C C and some other rules coming up, and that there was a, a suggestion that former members be caught by that. Does that mean that if, if I'm a member of CANS and then you seek to investigate me for disciplinary action, if I withdraw my membership and I'm no longer a member, then you can't investigate me?
Currently, if we're aware that a member may be subject to a disciplinary, uh, examination, uh, we can stop the member from resigning, so we do have a process. The process of resignation is the member offers to resign and that resignation is accepted. So, uh, in the, to the extent that there is a.
I'd better resign before you find out.
Which is why we are very, uh, motivated to resolve that and to have a former member jurisdiction. As we have in the New Zealand context, our New Zealand members are subject to a former member jurisdiction.
And, and just, sorry, just on leading on that question though, is there any interoperability between yourselves, the C P A, the I P A, when it comes to something like that? So if you're made aware of a member who might have a complaint, they have resigned from your membership but have moved to C P A or I P A or the like, is there some sort of referral process that exists there?
There is a power under the bylaws for the P C C to notify another, uh, professional body of a concluded, of a finding, uh.
But not necessarily an allegation, is that right, or?
Not necessarily an allegation.
Okay.
Um, just a final question, and I do apologise, and, and thank you for staying, um, a little bit later than we, um, had planned. But I just wanted to finally ask you about the, your statement on the E Y, um, Broderick review. Um, the last paragraph of that, the statement is, um, quote, "This is a collective challenge and only a collective response will be enough to create change", end quote. Um, with respect, that implies that, uh, either you're not seeing the E Y situation as being significantly serious, or you see that, um, these same problems are spread across, uh, the entirety, uh, of the big four, and that, that is also very concerning. So do you stand by that statement?
Chair, I, we do, and we stand by the statement for the reasons that Elizabeth, Elizabeth Broderick gives in her report, which is that there's nothing particularly unique about E Y versus other professional services firms across Australia. These are issues around, you know, racism, bullying, sexual harassment. There's nothing to indicate that it is not something that would be, um, of equal import to other large firms. The risks around, the risk of saying it's just confined to E Y is that we don't take it seriously enough. And I think as a professional association, one of our very strong messages to our profession has been, over the last few years, has been, take diversity, equity and inclusion seriously, take safe workplaces seriously. These are not negotiable.
There is also a risk though, isn't there, that if we don't look at findings like this, um, in that sort of, you know, micro-specific way, then we do make, we, 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 I guess, run the risk of saying, well, this is just society-wide. Um, the fact is that we found in, in this Broderick report, it is quite shocking, some of those, those, um, findings. And some of them appear to be, um, at least compared to some other, um, parts of society, a bit worse at E Y than other places. I don't know if the other big four have done a similar type of review. Um, but what are you doing as the regulator to check that, um, firstly, it's not the same at the, at the others? Um, but in, in either case, to make sure that the profession that you are regulating is actually setting the standard?
At this stage, the report having just been published yesterday, we are still working through the report in detail to understand the implications and understand the extent of the inquiry that, uh, we might make as a professional association. I would expect that there will be, you know, serious introspection at E Y and the implementation of the pilot programmes will be, uh, you know, hopefully used in a way to communicate learnings more broadly across the sector. Uh, we are one of many organisations that will be taking a very close look at what happens out of this review, particularly as it relates to safe workplaces, uh, and I would imagine that, um, we'll have more to say once we've had a chance to properly digest all of the detail in this report, but certainly we agree that it's, um, it is concerning, it's tragic, and the, the learnings need to be taken, uh, on board by all large professional services firms.
Thank you, and I do appreciate you spending, um, this extra time with us, so thank you very much and thank you for, um, answering all of our questions. Um, to the extent that questions were taken on notice and that, or that there are supplementary questions, you'll have twenty-one days to respond and the committee secretary will be in touch to discuss that. Um, but that, um, takes us to a break. We will be back at three thirty. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, excellent. So, welcome. All right, let's start the broadcast. Excellent. I now welcome our next witnesses from the Australia Institute who are appearing via video conference. If I could get you to please start by stating your name and position titles and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Bill Brown, I'm the Director of the Australia Institute's Democracy and Accountability Programme. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Excellent, thank you.
My name's Rod Campbell, I'm the Research Director at the Australia Institute. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Excellent, thank you very much. And I will just note for the benefit of our witnesses that the audio is certainly much clearer when you are looking upwards at the screen for some reason, so that's just a tip. Sorry, if you could just pause for one second.
I didn't know if this was appropriate, but given the types of things we've been talking about, I should declare that for a period of some years I was on the board of the Centre for Future Work, which is associated with the Australia Institute, so I just wanted that on the record.
Thank you. The more disclosure, the better, I say, in all of the things. Thank you, Dr Kane. If I could ask if you'd like to begin by making a short opening statement?
Yes, and thank you for having us here today. Multiple scandals involving PWC have shone a light on the heavy use that governments make of consulting firms. This dependency is not limited to one level of government or one side of politics. The overuse of consulting firms undermines public service capacity because it, first, using consultants for work public servants could do stops public servants from developing those skills. Two, public servants who don't have the skill to do the government work also don't have the skill to tender for consultants to do that work. Three, consultants become embedded and can lock agencies and departments into proprietary or arcane systems or processes. Four, the money spent on consultants could hire many more public servants. Overuse also leads to poor government decision-making because, one, politicians and public servants show consultants a deference that is not always deserved. These are often generalists with an incentive to put in the minimum required effort. Two, consultants are sometimes hired to tell the government what it wants to hear, and sometimes they bury reports the government doesn't want to see. And three, consultants have an incentive to favour their own interests and that of their private clients in the advice they give to governments. The use of consulting firms by government is not popular. And to give two examples, our polling research finds that four in five agree that the public service should have the skill and capacity to do work currently outsourced to consultants. And four in five agree that consultants should be required to answer questions about work commissioned by the government when called upon by parliamentary and other inquiries. When you're considering where to direct your questions, my expertise is on the general problems governments experience with consulting firms and how change in law and policy could help. I also have more details on the polling research. My colleague Rod has over a decade of experience with the damaging role consulting firms play in the New South Wales Planning System and wider mining and energy policy field. He can provide examples of consultant shopping. For example, New South Wales Planning knowingly appointed an industry-aligned consultant to review controversial projects. Two, extensive use of conflicted or potentially conflicted consultants in the planning process. Three, the reduction of public service capacity due to over-reliance on consultants. Four, consultant assessment being preferred to public service advice. For example, New South Wales Planning and the Planning Assessment Commission accepted consultant advice that the state-owned Cobura Coal project was viable, contrary to New South Wales Treasury advice. Five, consultant work being buried. Coal Innovation New South Wales paid Deloitte around $330,000 in 2018, 19 and 2019, 20 for economic assessment of carbon capture and storage potential in New South Wales, which has never been published despite several requests. And finally, six, the planning department knowingly used inflated consultant reports to mislead the Independent Planning Commission, particularly in relation to the Mangoolah-Adval Hill coal mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Campbell, did you also want to make a short statement or is this covering for you as well?
That covers me, I'm happy to take questions.
Excellent.
There's quite a bad echo. I'm not quite sure how that might be fixed, but...
If I could just say, when I was webexing for the last inquiry, I had the same problem. So, I don't know if that's something generally in terms of the system.
Yeah, apologies. It's, yeah, because it's fine for us here. I am looking at our tech people to see if there's anything they can do. But in the meantime, we'll persist. Please let us know if you need us to repeat any of the questions. I guess I'll start by just one of the, we'll get to some more general questions in a bit, but because we've got the benefit of your expertise, Mr Campbell, in relation to the New South Wales Energy and Environment area, I did want to pick up on something I mentioned in one of our earlier hearings in relation to the Future of Gas Statement. So, my understanding is that Ernst &amp; Young had been paid $67,375 in 2021 to produce that Future of Gas Statement, which I must say does seem a little bit low for that kind of work compared to the rest of the consulting work we've seen. And at the same time, they were the lead auditor for Santos, who, as you are no doubt aware, was the beneficiary of some very nice words said about them in that Future of Gas Statement, which effectively greenlit the Narabri project. What is your comments on that situation? Is that something that you have seen commonly? Does it cause you concern that you've got a consulting arm basically working on a statement that ends up being favourable to a client of the auditing firm? Yeah, just any reflections on that, I'd be grateful, and any other examples that are similar.
Absolutely. It's a clear conflict of interest. And EY were working not just for Santos. EY have worked for a number of very controversial coal projects in the New South Wales Planning System. So, to also have them working for the New South Wales Government and for the government in relation to environment and energy matters seems as clear a conflict of interest as you can imagine. Their work's been controversial. One of the main economic modeler who works on these issues for Ernst &amp; Young has been described in the New South Wales Land and Environment Court as inflating numbers for his client. This was in relation to the Rocky Hill matter. Some of his evidence was described as being, by the judge, as being contrary to economic theory and, and I'm quoting here, "plainly wrong". So, here's a consultant with a track record of presenting evidence that is plainly wrong on behalf of coal companies to the New South Wales Land and Environment Court. And yet, he is being charged with significant modelling assignments that are submitted to the New South Wales Planning System. And indeed, his company is hired by the New South Wales Planning System. So, it seems a proper pickle.
Proper pickle. I think, you know, if we were to put this situation to, you know, to one of the big four and said, you know, how can you possibly have, you know, the same firm doing work for government in relation to what's going to sort of spell out the future for the gas projects of one of your major clients in audit? They would, they would point at these, you know, so-called integrity walls, whatever they're calling them now, and say, yes, yes, but we're, you know, the audit function is totally different. I guess why, and maybe, maybe that's a question for you, Mr Brown, but, you know, why, why is that not sufficient to rely on these entities to, sort of, you know, stop this information going or these conflicts of interest going across departments?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think it's both, we see in theory the problem with relying on these screens. And that's partly to do with the probity that we expect from government, which to some extent is a higher standard than that expected of, say, the corporate sector. The public is quite entitled to expect that the conflict of interest is properly managed. We expect from public servants a higher standard of behaviour than that we expect from private consultants. And that reflects the importance of the work that government does and the trust that's been placed into it by the public. But there's also the practical side, which is that we see evidence of these walls, these screens, failing to hold up. And at the federal level, of course, PWC's failure to properly handle confidential tax information that was given to it is the classic example. But even as that scandal's unfolded, we've seen other examples of PWC and other consulting firms again failing to keep that separate. So, a pitch for work might come to a department from one's part of the consulting firm when another part of the consulting firm's been retained for strategic information. Thinking there of the department, the Federal Department of Agriculture. And similarly, the situation that the Australian Federal Police has been placed in of potentially investigating PWC while also depending on it for not just kind of one type of advice, but a variety of different forms of consulting. It goes to show again how we can't just depend on those walls. We need stricter rules about conflicts of interest and what's allowed to be contracted there.
Our inquiry has found... Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, could I add? That in my understanding, these walls kind of sit between the audit function and other functions of consultancies. But in relation to, I guess, my specific expertise on economic modelling and it...
Nope, I think we've lost... Sorry, Mr Campbell, your video just froze. Could I suggest maybe if you turn off your video and we just have your voice, we might get a better, clearer...
Sure.
Yeah, perhaps we could try that. Apologies.
That's okay. I've got everybody else quite loud and clear.
Yep, that's excellent. Yes, if you could just repeat your last sentence before I interrupted you, that would be great.
Actually, great, the echo's gone away now too, so...
Excellent.
So, while there is claimed to be a wall between audit functions and other parts of large consulting firms, there's no wall within the economic modelling and economic consulting parts of these businesses. So, we see time and again the economic arm of a consultancy consulting for coal companies and then the very same people consulting to the New South Wales Planning Department. So, I think EY is one example there. But another and possibly more controversial example is a firm called BA Economics, led by controversial economist Brian Fisher, who has a long track record as a coal industry and mining industry-aligned economist. He presented all kinds of assessments on behalf of coal companies in the planning system. And when the New South Wales Planning Department needed an opinion on particularly controversial fossil fuel projects, the Narabri Gas Project and the dendrobium, I think it was, yeah, it was dendrobium mine that's under sensitive watershed areas in the Illawarra. When the New South Wales Planning Department needed an opinion on these particularly controversial mines, they went not to the other consultants they had been using, who don't appear to be as conflicted, but they went straight to BA Economics because they knew what kind of opinion they were going to get there. I think it's a clear example of consultant shopping. And there's no kind of wall within economics consultancies that stopped the same economist from consulting one minute to a coal company and the next minute to the planning department. So, those walls are only even claimed to exist within the particularly large consulting companies. Within some of the smaller, more boutique economics consultancies, they don't exist at all.
When we've, we've asked in previous hearings of this inquiry, you know, whether it's government or, you know, members of local health district boards or whatever, when we talk about conflicts of interest, we get told, yes, but it was disclosed. So, for example, somebody providing economic consulting to the government might say, oh, by the way, we also do this for, you know, XYZ Coal Company. And the message we've been getting is that that sort of makes it all okay then because it's been disclosed. Can you explain, I guess, why, sort of what the difference is between a simple disclosure and a, you know, potential management of a conflict versus, I guess, when a situation is just so heinous and risky that we shouldn't be taking on that engagement at all? Is that a recommendation?
That general, that general question's a good one for Bill, but I'd just say that that kind of disclosure doesn't happen at all within economic assessment of planning projects in the New South Wales Planning System. You never get told that, oh, by the way, Brian Fisher works extensively for the Minerals Council and here he is working for the department in assessing this project. That kind of disclosure just does not happen, at least not to the public. Perhaps it happens to the department. But it's, I can assure you, it is absolutely not on the documents that become public facing. But sorry, the more general question is probably a better one for Bill.
And yeah, so I think it's also the case that, yeah, you'd expect as the bare minimum for those conflicts of interest to be disclosed. And where the work that a consultant has done is public, it'd be appropriate to include all the conflict of interest details there so that it can be judged by the public in that light. But it might be that it's for the government then to have policies about how it handles conflicts of interest with those it's contracting for, that are more robust and rigorous than what we've seen so far. To some extent, the consulting firms should be handing over the conflict of interest details and then leaving it for the person contracting with them to decide if those conflicts of interest are too severe for them to be retained. I guess a part of the problem with government in particular is that there are, there's a kind of split principal agent problem where the government is making the decisions for who to retain, but it's the public that ultimately bears the costs, both in terms of the actual money handed over, but then also the quality of what comes back. And so, there's a potential incentive for government to ignore or even be motivated by those... by those conflicts of interest, um, in a way that, uh, if the, uh, incentives were aligned, they wouldn't commission that contractor. Um, so that's why I think stronger written rules about what consultants can be retained are desperately needed. Uh, and I think, given what we've seen from the big consulting firms, that could mean ruling out conflicts of interest, um, more strictly rather than just, uh, managing them.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Brown, if I could ask, in your submission to the federal inquiry, sort of going on with this discussion of transparency and, and how we should report or potentially report, um, I think in your submission, you made a suggestion that the Senate issue a standing order for the production of consultant reports and also recommended that consulting firms be available to be called to Senate estimates. Um, are there parallels, jurisdictional parallels that could be drawn there?
Yes, absolutely. I, I think the same arguments would apply to, uh, an order for papers from the Legislative Council. Um, the, uh, the argument at the federal level is one that we arrived at after looking at the role that Boston Consulting Group played in, in Australia Post and the controversy there relating to Christine Holgate and so on, um, where, uh, people linked to Australia Post were identifying problems with the Boston Consulting Group report. And there was a sense that then it might have been commissioned with a, a determined answer in mind. Um, but it, it took quite a long, uh, Senate process to actually drag out the details of that document. Um, it's kind of my thinking that in most cases, the reports that public money pays for should be made publicly available, uh, and the, uh, public attention is, is going to be one of the best ways of, of assessing whether these consultants' reports really hold up. Uh, so I'd strongly recommend that the Legislative Council, uh, look at adopting some kind of similar, uh, standing order. Uh, and similarly, although I have to confess, I'm not an expert in how the Legislative Council budget estimates process works, um, our thinking when looking at Senate estimates is that if you are going to keep consultants doing some of the core work of government, then it makes sense that they should be subject to some of the same scrutiny measures that public servants are subject to, uh, and being called up to budget estimates seemed like the one natural way of, of doing that.
Mr. Gallagher.
Um, thanks Chair. Um, I take all that evidence on board. In other words, there is a, what, what you're essentially saying in your submission and your evidence is, is that there is a way that we could tighten this up and still use consultants and there's a place for them. Um, but essentially your position from the submission isn't, it is, is that given the inherent, um, conflict, it's almost embedded in a way because you've got essentially competing objectives, right? You've got a firms who've got an interest in economic gain via dividends to shareholders, which directly conflicts with, um, their obligations to provide, um, good advice to government. Um, but it relies on number one, a declaration of the interest, and if that doesn't happen, there's the first problem. Number two, once the interest is declared, then someone has to vet that interest, that conflict and, and ascertain whether or not it's problematic. And from what you're saying, there's no real, um, overall government approach to the intricacies of that. In other words, ex-director declares a conflict, is there anyone in government who's charged with actually exploring that and, and ascertaining whether the degree of the conflict is sufficient enough to be a problem? Um, and number three, it's denuding the capacity of the public service to do things that it otherwise would have had. So essentially your position is, is that whilst we can incrementally try and fix up a lot of these things, the ultimate solution is to actually get the government to employ people who have no conflict because they're employed by the public sector to operate in the public's interest, uh, in the long run, that's the, that's essentially what you're saying, isn't it?
Yes, I think that's well put, and I'd say that poor government work should be done by the public service, by those bound by, you know, the federal level of Public Service Act, I'm sure there's equivalent in New South Wales, uh, to give frank and fearless advice and with the protections that we have there. Um, in, in terms of kind of the incremental approach, one thing we've suggested, and this has been, uh, also suggested by some consulting firms, is that where, um, consultants are retained, there should be public service capacity building built into that. So you might have the consultants this time, but not need them the next time around.
So that's, that's a very interesting point, Mr. Brown, because I think, um, the current, under the current paradigm, what essentially happens is, is that public servants over a period of 20 to 30 years have actually, in a lot of ways, taught consultants how to do their job. And what you're suggesting is we should go back to a model where expertise is brought in when the public service hasn't got those bespoke expertise, but the public service should learn so that in the future, the public service may be able to do it. So it's almost like a reverse of what's happening now.
Yeah, that's right. And, um, uh, not just kind of, we've seen the public service teaching consultants, but we've seen consultants, um, uh, you know, poach is a pejorative term, but, but take public servants and hire them and often can offer them a more interesting experience, one that might have more impact on government than the work they've been doing within the public service, which is, you know, just such a shame if nothing else. Um, so yeah, I think that's absolutely right. Build up the capacity, uh, and also reduce the risk that, uh, if consultants are retained, they might encourage people to be, might encourage departments to be locked into kind of a, a long-term dependent relationship. And you can kind of see quantitative evidence that this occurs by the fact that consulting firms are often willing to give a discount on the initial work that they do, uh, and that's because they're confident that departments will come back in the future for more work on that same stream.
Can I just, um, just following, just on from that, then I'll come back to you, Dr. Kane. Um, you know, we're talking about a bunch of people who only do public sector work, who otherwise might be consultants, who are subject to public service, um, standards. Um, it reminds me of the, um, the sort of talking points coming out of Allegro and P W C when they're talking about this sort of carving out, uh, of what they're now calling, and I can't pronounce it, Skine or Sign, whatever it is. Um, effectively, they're talking about a bunch of consultants who only do government work and who are subject to these higher sort of public sector standards. Um, what, does that make sense to you? Like, why wouldn't we just use the public sector if we, if that was our option?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a good point and not a question I can answer. It, it doesn't seem to, um, to, to justify their existence separate from, from government. Um, at the federal level, uh, Senator Gallagher is looking into, or I think has funding for, uh, an internal government consulting service, um, with an eye that maybe there are some benefits provided by external consultants, but that doesn't have to mean external to government, it can mean external to the particular department or agency. Um, I think that might be a model, uh, New South Wales might find it worth looking at as well. I think the other thing that the, the willingness to split off P W C's government arm from the rest of the organisation shows, um, is that there isn't necessarily a strong case for P W C to be as big and broad as it is. Um, if this new sign organisation is going to do good quality work, then why do the government consulting arms of other consulting firms have to remain part of these big agglomerates that raise all the conflict of interest, uh, you know, ethical screen concerns that we have?
But just to that point, Mr. Brown, isn't that part of it, I guess, in a sense, in terms of managing conflicts of interest, that something like a consulting firm that doesn't have private sector clients is one way of managing that, um, conflict of interest, which you mentioned previously?
Yeah, that's true. And of course, it'll be interesting to see how it develops. Uh, yeah, it's both the case that, um, it raises questions about why they need to be external to government at all, but it does also presumably address the problems, um, that we've seen around screens. Um, that said, I would just quickly flag that, for example, the way K P M G has provided consulting services to, um, both Treasury and Transport in terms of the T A H, she suggests that, uh, even a firm that consults only for government can still be subject to some conflict of interest concerns.
Could I, there's, there's a bit of a logical disconnect though, there isn't there, in that we're being told that we need to use these external consultants because they have all of this industry experience and outside experience with private clients. Um, but then, you know, that's creating a conflict of interest, so what we're going to do is just have a government-only consulting service, which just sounds like the public sector.
Well, I guess the argument in a sense is that with the consulting firms that, uh, and to put this to Mr. Brown, and rather than you and I just having a debate here.
Through the chair, through the chair, I do have a question waiting there, Mr. Farlow.
I haven't had that much of a go on this round, I must say. But, um, isn't it inherent that, um, I think some of the examples, um, and Mr. Campbell's not with us now, but raised before in terms of private sector companies, that there's often private sector conflicts that these consulting firms have to deal with as well? They might be dealing with multiple, um, companies in the one industry, competitors to each other. So there are standards that they're required to have in the private sector as well as the public sector in managing conflicts of interest.
If I.
I think that was directed as a question.
Oh, right. I couldn't hear the question.
Uh, yes, yes, I, I think that's true, those standards exist. Uh, to be honest, I'm not sure, um, I, you know, it's not my area of expertise in terms of how well they are upheld, um, in terms of just keeping the interests of two private clients separate, um, but certainly we've seen that they've failed to always protect the interests of their public sector clients.
Uh, I am still here.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Mr. Campbell, I couldn't see you on the screen, sorry.
That's okay. Um, just, I mean, in relation to economics consultants, that there really are no standards at all, that there are no professional standards for economists in Australia, there's nothing to stop anyone, uh, hanging out a sign outside their house right now and saying, you know, Rod's economic modelling, come on in. Um, that, that you can't do that if you're a, an accountant or a doctor or a plumber or almost any other profession, but certainly in terms of economics consultants and the economics arms of the major consultancies, there, there are literally no standards at all.
Dr. Kane.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just talking a bit more about structure, I know we were talking about the P W C split, but I note that in a number of submissions here and in the federal inquiry and in, and in evidence, that there's been quite a bit of discussion about the fact that the large consultancies are structured as partnerships, which makes them quite different to other organisations. I wonder if you could expand a bit on, on why that's been the focus of some attention?
Um, I guess the one thing that struck me about, um, the partnership model was that, um, it's my understanding that kind of the purpose of a partnership is that the shared decision-making and shared profits should lead to shared responsibility, um, and kind of a shared accountability for, uh, errors made by the firm as well as shared profits for the, the work that it does. And that hasn't seemed to be the case with these big consulting firms, perhaps in part because they're, they're so big that partners are isolated from other parts of the division. So I guess I, I was struck by, um, questions about whether that partnership model had, had served its intended purpose. Um, but that's the extent of my knowledge, I wonder if Rod has more to add?
Uh, nothing to add to that, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to ask you a, a question, Mr. Campbell, and I'm just wondering if we might try your, um, video on again, see if it's, um, any better this time. Um, so feel free to, to try your video. There we go. Let's, let's, let's see if it holds. Um, you talked earlier about the sort of, the, the other kind of multiple issues, I guess, with consultants in, um, planning and, and not just economic, um, modelling, but also obviously sort of environmental, um, consulting. Are you able to give us any other sort of examples of, of things that, that really you've seen on a more systemic level, but perhaps, you know, there are sort of some examples of it, um, that you can show us with sort of big projects and, and planning process, um, in New South Wales?
Yeah, and I think systemically, uh, what's a problem within the planning process is that, uh, the planning department has set up guidelines for what a consultant report needs to look like. And as long as those guidelines are met, then the department and largely the Independent Planning Commission, uh, take at face value whatever else is said. And so, uh, we found ourselves in an extraordinary situation a little while back, uh, in relation to the Mangoolah Coal Project, where the planning department basically said, as long as a consultant's report complies with guidelines, they don't care how accurate it is. Um, and I can, I can read some of this to you. This is a, this is from the transcript, where an IPC member asked a senior planning department, uh, saying, uh, is your approach, uh, really to check that, uh, the report is consistent with the relevant guidelines, not on the actual data that was used? Is that correct? And the public servants go on to say, yes, our consideration is whether the approach undertaken has been appropriately consistent with guidelines. So consultants are suddenly in a, in a position where they can take data from their clients, uh, conduct whatever analysis their clients ask for, as long as they've presented that in a fashion that's consistent with the guidelines that New South Wales Planning has, has established, then planning's not too worried about the, uh, the accuracy of the data. And worse still, even if planning was concerned about the accuracy of the data, their capacity to really interrogate the analysis seems to have been completely whittled down. Uh, it's worth noting that planning doesn't just, planning does not assess, do the, planning does not do the economic assessment of major projects themselves. The proponent hires one consultant to do the economic assessment and then planning hires a different consultant to consider the first consultant's work. And sometimes we see the ridiculous situation where the proponent isn't happy with planning's consultant's review of their consultant and they'll hire another consultant to review the first two consultants. That happened in the case of the Hume Coal Project in the Southern Highlands. Um, so we've reached a point where, uh, not, not only is planning not interested or able to, uh, or not only is planning not interested in whether or not consultants are using accurate data, but they're, they're really not able to interrogate it themselves, even if they wanted to. And, and I think that's a real problem. I think basic economic assessment of major projects really is or really should be core business for the planning department. Um, there are kinds of economic modelling, some kinds of economic assessment that I don't think are useful to have in-house, but cost benefit analysis of major projects, uh, assessment of royalty and tax claims, things like that should be absolutely core business for New South Wales Planning, and they seem to be completely unable to do it. They certainly prefer to hire in consultants to do it for them.
Can I just ask on this example, sorry, Mr. Campbell, what is the experience in other states in terms of that capacity? Does that exist? Is the same system applied in Victoria, Western Australia or the like, or?
Uh, I, I think my experience in Victoria is certainly that the Victorian planning, uh, planning department or equivalent, uh, certainly has a bit more capacity to do that. You still see the same issue of consultants hire, uh, sorry, proponents hire a consultant to, uh, write their report and are there potential conflicts there? Um, but I, I think there is more capacity within the department. Um, I've never seen Queensland's departments hire their own consultants. Um, so I, I don't think that is, I, I think New South Wales is definitely, uh, falling behind on internal department capacity. I guess, I, I would say that some of the guidelines that have been implemented, um, or and published and developed in New South Wales probably are ahead of the rest of the country. So, so some of those guidelines that the planning bureaucrats are so, uh, I was going to say enamoured with, but that, that sounds a little bit flippant, but that they refer to so, so strongly, yeah, a lot of work has gone into those guidelines. A lot of work in New South Wales has gone into trying to get proponent-commissioned analysis to comply with some standards because there are so few professionals. to comply with some standards, because there are so few professional standards in the economics profession. So I think New South Wales has developed some good guidelines. A lot of consultants were involved in the development of them. But in terms of internal capacity to assess what consultants are saying and manage their own consultants, I certainly think New South Wales Planning is in a bit of trouble.
Just on a couple of your points in the submission, you make the point that the, one of the recommendations, I think, would be to look at banning donations from consultancies which were quite significant. Do you have any examples of other jurisdictions where this has been addressed?
I'm not sure of other jurisdictions that have banned donations from consultant, or consulting firms in particular. There's some talk about restrictions on donations from those who contract with government in general, in which case you wouldn't necessarily want a ban there, you'd want to review the kind of level and frequency of contracting and come to a measured restriction there to avoid any problems of the implied freedom of political communication. And once you start looking more generally, I guess, at New South Wales as an example, that there have been restrictions on donations based on areas of industry that might have a particular interest in the decisions of government. And so I think you can argue by kind of comparison that similarly consulting firms might fall into the same category. But I don't know that there's anywhere else that has banned consulting firm donations in particular yet.
And on this other point that you make about the commercial in confidence often being used as a barrier for transparency, have you got any commentary about how that might be dealt with?
Yeah, so one area that I've looked at this for is the Senate's willingness to pursue, say, orders for the production of documents and questions on notice for government, and the government's heavy use, in some cases, of a commercial in confidence argument to justify withholding documents on public interest grounds. So there, I'd recommend that upper houses be more willing to use the political solutions that they have to insist on documents being produced. And indeed, there are examples of that happening in the Senate historically. And I think the New South Wales Legislative Council actually might be ahead of its other upper houses in terms of its willingness to use political solutions. But of course, that element of commercial in confidence is just one of many examples of the government depending on it. I think we probably do need a broader debate about how commercial in confidence has been abused. And an assessment of just how often companies that contract with government actually, how much, to what extent those contracts and that work really involves information that would be commercially revealing. The government is such a different client to other, to commercial clients, and is subject already to so many procurement rules, that I'm not sure how much commercial in confidence information is actually at risk from a more transparent disclosure regime. And maybe you just say, if you want to contract with a government that's spending public money, that's the price you have to pay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Given the time, I think we will have to end it there. With your permission, I would like to perhaps invite you back for another inquiry, for another hearing when we get to the planning department and we start covering energy and environment issues. Specifically, you, Mr. Campbell, I think that would be incredibly useful. This is going to be a long-ranging inquiry, so we, that might be not for a few months, but if you're willing, that would be fantastic to be able to use your expertise at that time. But until then, thank you very much for your attendance. And to the extent questions were taken on notice, or there may be some supplementary questions, if we could ask for you to return them within 21 days, and the committee secretary will be in touch to discuss how to do that. But I think that concludes us here. We will say goodbye to the two of you, and we will welcome our next witnesses shortly. Thank you.
Thank you.
That our new witnesses can hear me before we begin?
Yes.
You can. We can't hear, we can hear you, Ms. Dawson, but we can't hear you, Ms. Mackenzie.
Sarah, can you say something?
I don't think she can hear us either.
No.
Just contacting her, try to.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's great.
Okay.
It's often a problem, unfortunately.
I did all the right tricks, I promise. Anyway, I'm in a small room, so it shouldn't have any background noise.
No, no worries at all, thank you. So we now welcome our next set of witnesses from PerCapita. If I could ask each of you, and I'll start with you, Ms. Dawson, to state your name, position, title, and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Yes, certainly. My name is Emma Dawson. I am the executive director here at PerCapita, and we're based in Melbourne. And I'll just open my apologies. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Excellent, thank you. And Ms. Mackenzie?
Yeah, my name is, oh, sorry, so many technical problems.
You're right.
My name is Sarah Mackenzie. I am a research associate at PerCapita, and I will do the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And would you like to comment by making a short opening statement?
Yeah, yes, I'll defer to Sarah to give our opening statement today.
And I just wanted to say I am hearing a bit of an echo, so just letting you know that I might be in slightly different times. So thanks for the opportunity to appear in front of this committee and for this important inquiry into New South Wales Government use and management of consulting services. As I said, my name's Sarah Mackenzie, from PerCapita, which is an independent think-tank. Now, you have our submission, but I just wanted to make a couple of opening points about this inquiry. So trust is the glue of any liberal democracy. In New South Wales and in other Australian jurisdictions, the public needs to have trust in our public services and our public servants. We all depend on them. Our public servants are the human machinery of government. Impartiality and professionalism are vital to the efficacy of those constitutionally mandated systems of representative and responsible government. And because of this, there are beyond very special and sometimes onerous ethical obligations to act in the public interest. In contrast to that, consulting firms performing tasks that are traditionally in the remit of the public service do not have the same statutory obligations to act in the interests of the public or to put their public interests above their own personal interests. It's like a frog and a scorpion. These sectors are different in their very nature. While the chief imperative of the public sector is to preserve the public interest and to add professional and quality and value to the commitments of government, the chief imperative of the private firms is now and will always be to generate profit. Now, of course, this committee is aware of several scandals relating to consultancy firms engaged by government, and that they have primarily come about because of whistleblowers or because of the work of investigative journalists. In our opinion, what is most troubling about these revelations is, of course, what is in them, but more that they had to, that the whistle had to be blown at all, the fact that this information was never meant to be available to the public in the first place. Yet, in light of scandal after scandal, we're seeing big consultancy firms continue to get work. So it's clear that these organisations are not held accountable for their performances. Our submission focuses on the need for transparency and accountability. Strengthening transparency and accountability in monitoring and reporting on the use of consultants should be the urgent priority of government. Anything funded by taxpayers should be published in the public domain. So this could include reviewing the freedom of information provisions, whether they should extend further to commercial and confident information, but also placing strict restrictions on contractual obligations. So of course, there's good reason why government might want to use specialist advice, but we are really questioning whether the current over-reliance on external firms to provide consulting services to government is because government agencies are specifically seeking that advice, or if it's because consultants are now needed to perform those critical functions of government that no longer exist in what might be a more hollowed-out public service caused by lack of investment in that in-house capacity building. And so when thinking about, you know, the government being so reliant on consultants, it's important to note that really the only way to reduce this is by sharpening the capacity of the public sector. And so to this point, we would really recommend a full review of the public sector to identify those knowledge gaps, and so those gaps can be filled, develop policies to retain staff. And that might include things like minimizing the use of temporary employment contracts and also reviewing remuneration. That's all I have for an opening statement, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your submission and for coming along and giving us the benefit of your expertise. Perhaps I'll start just by, I guess, where you just left off, Ms. Mackenzie. When we look at, you know, we've heard a lot about the hollowing out of the public sector with this over-reliance on consultants. There's been discussion on raw numbers of how many people are sitting in our public sector and whether we can draw those conclusions, you know, sort of based on the data. But you were, as you were just saying, there's kind of a need to sort of review the public sector itself for the gap. So when you look at, for example, if we have too many people in, I'm trying to think of a polite way to say this that doesn't involve a swear word, but a, you know, the types of jobs that are just busy work, I think you know the term that I'm referring to. You know, if we've got these, you know, people sitting in these kind of busy work jobs or people that are at a very high management level, but we're lacking the resources to actually, you know, do sort of business cases or economic modelling or things like that, then that's, it goes deeper than just the raw numbers. Could you talk a little bit more about that? And whether you've seen, I guess, is there other examples in other jurisdictions we can look to where they've done that better?
I can't speak to other jurisdictions, but I would say, yes, that isn't a surprise that you're hearing, you know, a lot of information about this hollowing out of the public sector, but without, like, I think, a review of where there are gaps in knowledge, you're not really going to find out how, what information is correct. So if you have a look at the New South Wales public sector, the amount of people in the public sector obviously went up during COVID, it'd been on a downwards decline for a while, popped back up when we really needed the public sector, probably the most in my entire lifetime, that the public sector was so important. And but now is also is dropping down again. So that's, yeah, that's why we would recommend a review of it. It's also that it's eating itself, you know, you've got, if you're hollowing out the public sector, where is that expertise going? Are they going to these consulting firms? Are they ever going to come back to a public sector if they can earn double as much over there as well? I have a lot of sympathy for the problem, and I hope that we can help somewhat, but I think more reviews into it is probably, and targeted reviews is probably the way to go.
And I think.
If I can add to that.
Please do.
Yeah, I think the point you make is a very good one, is that we, what has happened across the public sector federally but at a state level as well in most state jurisdictions is the loss of that middle tranche of experts, of people that do have the capacity to develop a business case, to put in place the kinds of expert advice on critical areas of service delivery that used to be there. So we now have a public service that is very good at procurement, but not actually as good at the delivery of advice and of critical analysis of programmes. That's been outsourced for so long that really that middle tranche is missing. So as Sarah said, we still have a fantastic public sector in terms of service delivery at the community level. We saw that during the pandemic, our frontline workers are valuable and do a job that really can't be replaced. And at the top, we have people who are very adept at managing contracts. But moving from being the deliverers, the holders of expertise and advice to the procurers of our external experts is where I think we've gone too far down that track.
I'll ask one last question before I go and hand over to my colleagues, but I guess one of the election commitments that the new Labour government went to the election with was around this sort of freezing of public sector executive pay. And I think there is perhaps a little bit of kind of bureaucrat bashing at times that is perhaps popular with some in the media. But if we're to rebuild the public sector, we need to be careful, don't we, about sort of our ability to attract the right people, again, at the right levels. And we're not talking about those people in ridiculous made-up roles, but in, yeah, so in terms of, I guess, other examples in other jurisdictions or around the world where there has been a successful rebuilding of the public sector, and what are the principles that they did it on?
I think we could take some of that on notice. We're certainly aware of efforts in Canada, for example, to reinvest, and New Zealand in particular in recent years. We can certainly come back with more detail about why and where that has worked and the principles that need to inform it. I think at a fundamental level, career in the public service used to be just that, a lifelong career with good career progression. You could enter that sector as a graduate and loosen the ropes and progress and expect to have a long career that provided you with career development, education and ability to move through just more senior roles. That's often disrupted now. We still train graduates, we still have entry-level positions, but then we are losing too many experts in mid-career to these highly-paid external consultancy jobs. And that's partly a function of consultants' growing and largely a function of a misguided attempt to crack down on public sector expenditure by refusing to invest in expertise.
Thank you. Dr. Kane?
Thanks very much, Chair. I wondered if I could ask a question on a slightly different topic, but it relates to the hearings that we've had today, which is about the capacity for, sort of accountability, and about the capacity for self-regulation of consultants by professional or other bodies or any other sort of regulatory mechanisms. And I wondered if you could sort of give your thoughts or research or understandings of what works and what doesn't work?
Well, I was listening this morning to the first three you had, and they outlined, I think, pretty well what mechanisms are there, that there are. And of course, there's internal self-accountability measures, but anybody opening a paper in the last three weeks will know that they're simply not working. If a public servant behaved in the way that we're finding out, was, has been happening in some of these big firms, the consequences are huge for them. They have consequences under legislation, and they have the, sorry, I'm from Victoria, but the Government Public Service Act, that you have similar, has similar obligations on public servants. And so I think there is a bit of a disconnect between, you know, what we would think or what every person would expect the consequences would be and what they actually are. or what every person would expect the consequences would be and what they actually are. I think it's also creating that sort of risk reward problem where you go, okay. So a couple of years ago, you had Brendan Lyon in here telling New South Wales Parliamentary Committee about what had been going on within KPMG. And KPMG is still receiving limited tenders from New South Wales Government. That is not a judgment on my part, but it does sort of raise eyebrows as to why there isn't some other sort of perhaps internal body within the government that deals with this. There will always be times when you will need to use external consultants. So perhaps it is something within the public sector that oversees the use of external consultants doing activities that would otherwise be done within the public sector.
And I think that does reinforce the earlier point too, which is, as Sarah said, there will be times when external providers are needed by the government, by the public sector. But if you have so badly undermined the capacity of the public sector itself, then the checks and balances aren't in place. So there needs to be that capacity, even if it's a procurement system and procuring out external contracts, to be able to recognise when things look a bit wrong or when guidelines may have been breached. So that capacity and that expertise being retained within the public sector is critical for that. I think more broadly, the issue of regulation is at the heart of this. Self-regulation is all well and good in an industry if there's sufficient competition and if there is sufficient guidelines for that self-regulation to adhere to. We haven't put those things in place. What we've seen is a kind of creeping of the use of consultants in a way that has happened almost without people consciously wanting it. So there was not the regulatory framework in place first. So self-regulation by effectively, as we say in our submission, private companies' first guiding principle is to make profit for their shareholders. And so they are not going to be self-regulating in a way that is adequate to meet the standards of the government and the public sector. So the kind of regulatory processes that need to be in place need to be embedded within the public service. And they need to be held, if they are undertaking work in the public interest, it should be held to the same standards of probity, of ethics, of transparency as would be any public servant. So the contract should reflect that quite clearly. And I think one other point we've made is that without very, very good reason, there should not be commercial incompetence provisions in contracts for public sector to do.
Can I just ask a quick follow up? Because what we're hearing from your submission and the evidence we've had put on is that essentially you've gone from what should be a common sense intuitive baseline, which is that you get the public sector to do the vast majority of work in-house and you contract out or you consult out for the bespoke expertise that would otherwise not be inherent in that public service for whatever reason. They can't do everything. And there will be people out there in the bigger world who know more about it. Makes sense. What we've in effect, what we've in effect had, or what seems to be anecdotally coming through in the evidence, is a reversal of that model. So that you now have the overuse of consultants to the point where the public sector's been denuded of their expertise that they could have had, had we been building it up over the last 20, 30 years. And now we've got to perhaps get back to that old model. Has there been any studies done to actually show that incremental increase in the proportion of the use of consultants vis a vis internal staff over time? Like a longitudinal study over, say, because it feels like it's been happening over the last, say, 20 to 30 years. That's what it feels like, but it'd be good to see some numbers around it?
It would. I'm not aware of any such longitudinal study. I think it's something that warrants being done. One of the challenges, of course, is that this information is quite tightly guarded by government departments. What we can trace is the money trail and we don't have the figures for New South Wales. But we know there's been a tenfold increase in the use of outsourcing at a Commonwealth level over the last decade, both for labour hire into departments to supplement public sector service provision. But also, you know, significantly at a tripling of the money spent on consultancy services over recent, over the last decade as well. As I said, these are federal, these are federal figures. And that's coincided with the cap on public service jobs, on not increasing public service salaries or staff numbers. So going from a billion dollar spend back in 2013 to about $3 billion in 2022 seemed to, at the same time as we have had public service staffing caps, both at a state level in New South Wales and federally, that indicates a significant shift of resourcing, going to the private sector and coming out at the same time of the APS or the New South Wales Public Service. I think it is a worthwhile longitudinal study that someone should do and perhaps that's something PerCapita could take away as a project.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, I would just add to that with those, when, sorry, I don't know if I've got a.
No, no, I just, I'm sorry, I interrupted. I was suggesting to the chair that maybe we might consider a recommendation. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 with those special figures, what's really, I suppose quite shocking about it is this huge increase in money, but not an increase or the same sort of increase in the number of contracts. And I know you've heard today and probably on hearings before today about long contract extensions. So you think you're paying this much for something and then it goes on and on. Though more information on that, I think, is something that would be of interest to, at least to us, but to the public. I just wanted to raise quickly though that that sort of, you know, only an expert can deal with a problem issue we're having, where these reports that are done by consultants are given legitimacy that almost seems like it doesn't exist if it was to come from the public sector. That to me is wild, but what it actually does is it allows somebody else to, I suppose, take the blame for if it's a problem. So if it's good, well, the government's got this expert to come and help us. If not, well, then it's the expert's problem and it's not our fault. But we'll continue engaging that same expert to do that same sort of work.
Sarah, could I interrupt? I mean, there are other places to source experts. I mean, I feel a little bit like I have a conflict. I am a, you know, ex-academic. There are other places to source expertise on issues, including, you know, the research sector, universities. Are you suggesting, are there other areas that we might be looking for this kind of expertise?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And I think the limited tenders that keep going to this same big four, sometimes five, is a big issue with that. This inquiry and the same inquiry that is happening on the Commonwealth level is hearing from heaps of experts, academics, people who have worked within the public sector as experts. It isn't just these big four, might be three soon. But these, yeah, limited tenders mean that the other people aren't having a say in it. Although still, of course, we'll always need experts from external sources outside of the public sector. But the public sector being rebuilt should really be the priority for those experts from within the public sector.
Oh, just one quick, very quick, sorry.
As the last resort, not as the first resort.
Just on that point.
I do agree with the point.
Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. I do agree with the point. And without being, you know, obviously self-interested, we're a public policy think tank ourselves. We pride ourselves on independent and evidence-based research. I also have an academic background. Australia has some of the most well-resourced, well-educated academics in the world. We have a really fantastic network of researchers and experts within universities and higher education and the research field across the country, most of whom work primarily in the public good and in the common interest. And I think one of the risks with, as Sarah said, the limited tenders going to these same four consulting firms is by their very nature, they share a certain ideological view of the world, which is that the role of government should be reduced and the role of the private sector should be increased. And they are inherently seeking profit. They inherently are seeking a return on investment, which we all want as good public custodians. But it can, it does cut out different perspectives, perspectives that are able to look beyond the short term, for example, beyond immediate returns and looking at the longer term and middle term national interest. So I would encourage the committee.
Order. Sorry. Can we, yeah, I will let Ms Munro ask her question. I'll come back to you, Mr Buttergig.
Thank you very much, Chair. To Ms Dawson or Ms Mackenzie, who does fund the work of PerCapita?
We, I'll take that. I'm the executive director and I do our fundraising. So we receive our funding from a variety of sources. They're all on our website. We have full transparency about who funds us. It's a combination of philanthropic funding. There are a couple of big philanthropic foundations that provide money to us. We receive some support from parts of the union movement. And we have some institutional support from Maurice Blackburn and from other lawyers, law firms and other institutions. And then we receive public donations as well. I do know, as I said, there's a funding page on our website where you can see all of them listed.
Yeah, I have had a look at that and note that the, one of the three unions that is listed as part of the core PerCapita funding groups is the Community and Public Sector Union. They have long campaigned against the use of consultants by government. And as a core funder of PerCapita, would you say that this is something that should be declared to the committee in an inquiry like this?
I would say so if we took money from them for any specific purpose. As I said, we're completely transparent about our funding. Other union partners currently are the CPSU, CEPU and the ACTU and the Electrical Trades Union. We have very clear funding agreements with our partners that we will not in any way skew our research for preconceived outcomes. We are not guns for hire. We do partner with organisations who share our values. And but certainly we have not consulted with the CPSU on these submissions or before talking to you today. But as a progressive think tank that is dedicated to social justice and addressing inequality, we have long believed in the strength of the public sector. But that is not, we do not take writing instructions from the CPSU on that. But you're very happy to say we are, we are partly, they give us a donation once a year. It is not tied to any specific piece of work, but yes, they are a partner of ours.
So given the ideological views of the CPSU, you don't see a conflict of interest in speaking out publicly on this committee and against the use of consultants in favour of the public service?
Again, we're not against the use of consultants. We think there is a role for consultants. We think there is a role for experts. But we believe strongly, and if the CPSU pulled funding from us tomorrow, it would not change my view that an independent public sector that is able to give frank and fearless advice to government of all stripes, no matter which political party is in power, is an essential part of our Westminster system of democracy.
The CPSU would be thrilled if that layer of the public sector was going to be unionised or not. I'm sure they'd be absolutely delighted.
I suppose it's a matter of conflict of interest in just ensuring.
Which was fully disclosed.
All right.
How are they disclosed?
It's a website and it says social justice organisation.
We're going to Mr Buttergig.
Thank you, Chair. It's actually a nice little counterpoint to the debate. If we, let's take the ideology out of it for a moment, though. On purely economic grounds, my colleague and I were doing a calculation before, and you referred to this in your submission. Over five years, we've spent $1 billion on consultants. If you divide that by the five years, it's $200 million. If you allow for an average public sector wage of, say, perhaps with on costs $200,000, I think it'd be fair, that is 1,000 jobs per year. It's hard to imagine how you match that value of an internal resource by contracting out, isn't it? 1,000 jobs per year.
Those figures are pretty compelling. Again, we wouldn't comment on, without knowing what those 1,000 jobs are, obviously. And for the kinds of senior positions in the public sector, you'd be expecting a salary, you know, that's on par with perhaps a middle or upper middle management in the consultancy sector. I'm not fully across what consultants earn, but it's certainly more than I ever have. I do think there is strong evidence to show that we're not necessarily getting value for money on all of these contracts all of the time. When we are simply artificially imposing a cap on public sector workers with a view to saving headline funds on salaries, but we're then paying this out in consultancy fees, it is incumbent on our representatives in parliament to demonstrate that that is an effective use of taxpayer funding.
I mean, I could imagine for that sort of, for that sort of quantum of jobs, you could employ any number of structural engineers, electrical engineers, planning experts, contractual surveyors. I mean, God knows. It just seems to me as though, this is why the importance of this study, but just on those, and you referred to this before, the increase in the volume of spend is a leading indicator, I think, of the degree that, to which it's been, the model's been flipped. Instead of having a bespoke service where experts come in from time to time, it's now become a major portion of the state budget.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that's the reversal that gives cause for concern. I think it's important to note here, to go back to how this interplays with ideology. This is not simply an ideological position. It is a fact that government is more than the parliament. Government is more than the elected representatives. The machinery of government includes those public servants and the people that give action to government decisions, give action to service delivery. I don't think it's overly ideological to suggest that the Australian people expect those levels of the intrinsic part of government to be well defended and to be independent from private.
Well, asking for value of money, for value for money on behalf of taxpayers is hardly ideological, I would have thought, but anyway.
If I could, sorry, if I could just come back to the content, sorry.
Go on, let's try.
No, that's all right. I'll go off to you. I just wanted to pick back, pick up on some of the excellent points you made previously. Just in relation to the concept of, you know, having strong procurement guidelines. We heard in a previous hearing from the head of procurement in New South Wales and talking about the reliance that's placed on guidelines and processes to ensure that, you know, certain things are done. But without any sort of enforcement powers or checks and balances really in place. And one of the things that the auditor general picked out was that of the 82 consulting contracts that she had looked at, there was, you know, although there was a requirement under the procurement guidelines to do a post-engagement review, only three of those 82 contracts that she had sampled had actually had that. Do you think that that is an element, you know, there's an element of lacking the expertise to actually review the work that consultants have done? And are there sort of other ways of doing this that you've seen in other jurisdictions that can actually, I guess, see if we're getting value for money after these consultants' contracts have ended?
That's an excellent point. And I think that it does go to the broader issue I raised earlier of the lack of, loss of capacity and expertise within the public sector isn't just about direct work. It's about their ability to manage and oversee the contractors that are coming from the outside. The auditor general can't be expected to review every contract that comes into government. One thing that would be put in place that's been considered at a federal level, I know, is the Office of the E evaluator general, which is able to evaluate programmes and what works. I think having within each department an office that is responsible for evaluating the efficacy of contracts and whether those guidelines are adhered to would be a worthwhile investment at the same time as rebuilding the capacity within the senior levels of each department to monitor those contracts and to ensure that that top view isn't a nice to have, but it's a core part of the contracted agreement. Sarah, did you want to add to that?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Mr Farlow, did you ask your question?
Thank you very much. Look, I just wanted to pick up on the point about the profit orientated companies, of course, the consultancy firms are. And I would think in a sense, there's actually learnings from the private sector as well. Private sector companies need to manage their own engagement with consultants. Of course, a consultant wants to get more work. And as you've already talked about, there is that, and I think it was referenced in terms of the contracts haven't increased, but maybe the scope of the contracts have increased and they've extended. And there is a problem in government of managing those contracts. So are there any lessons from how the private sector potentially manages some of those contracts with consulting firms that potentially government could pick up on as well? how the private sector potentially manages some of those contracts with consulting firms that potentially government could pick up on as well?
Well, we haven't looked in great detail into, at all into the use of private, private sector using consultancy firms. So I, I can't give you an answer on that, sorry.
I can, I can speculate on that slightly. I have worked in private business and worked with consultants in the past. And I think that the key issue is ensuring when a private, when a private company engages a consultant and spends money on that consultant, they are beholden to either their board or their shareholders to ensure that they have delivered something against, that meets the original contract and is valued for money. There currently aren't such robust things in place in public sector engagement of consultants. Partly because it's so big and partly because the work of departments report to different ministers, perhaps the department reports to three, four different ministers. The parliament's processes, I've heard of that. But certainly the way that the private sector engages is to ensure that they are accountable to their shareholders or to, if they're not a publicly listed company, to their board and to their owners. That at the end of every year, there's a financial audit done of a company and they have to show where the money has been spent and what has been returned for it. That kind of almost audited financial year reporting by departments is not something that happens in the same way as in the private sector. But it should be the same principle.
And I guess in a sense, there has been the five-year annual, the five-year auditor general's report in terms of the use of consultancy services in New South Wales. But that sort of timeframe potentially is not the best to be able to rein in consultancy contracts or the like if we do see blowouts and them rolling out. So there, there might be potential mechanisms there. I don't know if your, your thoughts on that in terms of being able to better manage consultancy contracts within the public sector?
Yeah, I think five years is too long. I mean, we know that by the time something is reviewed on a five-year basis, the horse has bolted, the money's been spent, probably the programme's done with. Whether it would be a cost benefit analysis for the government to decide, well, is it worth increasing that to once every three years, once every year would be ideal, obviously. What is the cost of doing so? Ultimately, I would suspect if that were investigated properly, that the return, the benefit of ensuring valued for money and ensuring that contracts aren't blowing out and are delivering what they're expected to deliver would likely be worth the cost of increasing the frequency with which those reviews were done.
If I could come back to, there was an excellent point. In fact, both of you made an excellent point in relation to the, I guess, this idea that you need experts for certain things, but also Ms Dawson, you commented, and I'm not going to get the words right, but you put it in a really, in a really good way about, you know, basically there's a, there's an assumption from these consultants, you know, they're selling a product. And so I guess we've, you know, when we're looking at the number, the sheer number of consultants, either present or ex-consultants sitting on government boards, we're being told that, you know, there's no conflict of interest because they're not necessarily giving contracts to the consulting firms they used to work for or currently work for. But is there a form of conflict of interest in just having people on boards who see the need for consultants in the first place? Or, you know, perhaps there's a, at least a bias towards the use of consultants? When you've got boards stacked with consultants.
Stacked with consultants. Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think it's natural for anyone to to, to prefer the systems they are familiar with, to, to say, well, I know that works and I know how it works, so therefore I can trust it. And so I think diversifying the kinds of experts that sit on government boards, as I said earlier, and as was said by the committee, more use of academics, more use of people that aren't beholden to any particular outcome for their salary, for example. But also recognising that expertise is earned and learned. It's not automatic. And often consultants will say they're expert in something, they're not, and they're able to quickly learn on the job. What we need to recognise is that often the work of government can be quite innovative and someone will hold themselves out as an expert when they're actually learning as they're doing the work. That should be completely uncontroversial within the public service too. So the way that we build expertise and capacity is by asking people to greatly use new ideas and to understand them and offering coming in without that expertise, which has got a better ability to ask questions, to question assumptions, to question those inherent biases. Often people don't even recognise they have.
Can I add as well? Is there, okay, just on that, on that conflict of interest, I think we are in a situation, at least definitely federally, but probably within state jurisdictions as well, where we're dealing both with real conflicts in interest but perceived conflicts of interest as well. And, and I think they both kind of have the same effect on, on public trust and public trust in, in the use of these large consultancy firms, but also within public trust within government itself. And that there might need to be measures taken or imposed upon consultancies that maybe wouldn't have needed to be considered before to restore that trust, things like. I, I, I'm not sure if I noted in the New South Wales submission, but in our, at least in our federal submission, we spoke a bit about these large consultancy firms also being some of the biggest political donors. That is not, you know, just within itself, doesn't say there's a conflict of interest there, but, but it could be perceived to be one. You know, it may be true that you are able to put up a very good wall between you're consulting with the government about public policy while also advising forty-three of the world's biggest polluters. You might be able to do that, but at this point, I think we've got to a position where it would be difficult for the public to leave that. So I think we're dealing with both real conflicts of interest, but also perhaps some measures to deal with perceived conflict of interest that have been able to kind of fester.
If I may, just quickly, I think that relates very closely to the questions that I was asking before about if, if only a perceived conflict of interest, but at worst a conflict of interest that your organisation is required to manage, given the donors. I mean, as I said, those four donors, the CPSU makes up one-fourth of those donors could be making up a quarter of a percentage of your budget. So what measures, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just speculating, of course, but what, what measures are you taking? What measures are you taking to actually manage your conflict of interest?
Order. Progressive donors and progressive think tanks, it's not surprising they think the same. Can we, can we just move off that because we don't have enough time?
And can I just be very clear? The CPSU donates forty thousand dollars a year to us. Our annual revenue is one point two million dollars. So they are not calling the shots. They, they, they contribute a tiny proportion of our funding, nothing like a quarter of our funding, forty thousand out of one point two.
The percentages are similar for political parties as well, yeah.
But you're saying that nobody who donates calls the shots anyway, but I'm just asking about.
It's outside the terms of reference of this inquiry.
It's management of a conflict of interest.
This is not about PerCapita, this inquiry, and we have one minute left. I really want to ask a question. Go, go ahead.
No, I, my point was to make, I, I understand, it's my understanding that we invited PerCapita to be witnesses. It's not appropriate that we investigate, considering that due diligence in us, you know, being on this committee is that we might have Googled if we had concerns about who we were calling as witnesses. So I would just ask that we stay within the bounds of what we're meant to be doing.
Anyway, if I could take this last half a minute to ask you one question that is relevant to the terms of reference. One of the things that we've discovered during this inquiry is that the, the commercial, standard commercial framework under which the New South Wales Government appoints the big consultants where they've, you know, that's kind of puts them onto that pre-qualified list for procurement purposes, has a, a standard set of fees and also has a ten percent discount given where there's a second D put into government departments. Now, the fact that you have consultants discounting their fees by ten percent to put a second D into a government department, what does that tell you about the benefit of that secondment to the consultant?
Well, it's obviously worth a great deal to them to have someone inside the department to get the experience of what it's like to work in that, in that environment, to understand the ins and outs and the mechanics of public sector work and how the public sector engages with parliament. It's a very cheap form of training for their consultants. I think that's the least cynical interpretation. Perhaps a more cynical interpretation is that they are able to put people, they're able to put people inside the hen house, as, as it were, to access information that they may not otherwise easily access and that soft information that just comes through being there day to day. There, that, that practice has continued and of course we then see quite a revolving door with younger, the, the very talented members of the public service being extracted into those much more highly paid consulting jobs as well. So it can, it can both reduce the independence of the public service and it can reduce their ability to develop talent internally.
Thank you. Unfortunately, that's all that we have time for. Thank you so much for attending. This has been a, a very fascinating session and I'm very grateful for your expertise and the time that you have taken to share your views with the committee. To the extent that there are questions taken on notice and supplementary questions, then the secretariat will be in touch with you, but there's twenty-one days to return them. But that does conclude our hearing for today. Thank you very much to all our witnesses.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.